Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
And welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. And during this special time of year, I ask for blessings for those who might come together to worship, perhaps enjoy a special meal with family, give and receive gifts, and spend time with those loved ones. I especially ask for blessings for those first responders and members of our armed forces that might be separated from family and wish to be with them during this time of year. So just pray that you will put your loving hand on them, guide them, and offer them many blessings throughout this special time of year. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Before we get started, I know that some of you want to break at 11:30 to go to an event at, I think, in MacDill. That's going to depend if we finish our morning time certains, because we have to finish those time certains this morning. So if we don't, we have to keep on rolling. If we do, we'll break at 11:30. Okay? We're going to move to off the agenda items or proclamation presented by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning. Very pleased to be here to be honoring Mr. Frederick Follman and his wife Cindy. If you'd please come up and, okay, if you'd please come up and join me here. This is your day in Hillsborough County. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we're declaring December 18, 2019, as Frederick W. Follman the Third Day in Hillsborough County. We're deeply grateful for your service in this community. Whereas established as a branch of the United States Armed Forces, in 1947, the U.S. Air Force has produced generations of brave men and women who have dedicated their lives to the country. And whereas one such individual is Frederick W. Follman III, who served in the Air Force for over 42 years. That's amazing. A true testament of his unwavering commitment. And whereas in addition to the Sixth Mission Support Group of the Sixth Air Force Refueling Wing at MacDill Air Force Base, Mr. Follman provided exemplary support and guidance to the U.S. Special Operations Command, U.S. Central Command, and 31 military tenant units. And whereas Mr. Follman acted as a deputy commander of the Sixth Mission Support Group from 2004 to 2006, and his numerous accomplishments led to him serving as its deputy director from 2006 to 2019. And whereas as deputy director of the Sixth Mission Support Group, this is a lot of service (laugh) of the Sixth Mission Support Group, Mr. Follman was presented the Air Force Association Outstanding Civilian of the Year Award for his efforts in leading over 2,000 personnel in six diverse squadrons in 2017. And whereas throughout his tenure, Mr. Follman has provided invaluable consistency of mission and community relations with Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa. And whereas his service to the nation and the greater Tampa Bay community will end on December 31, 2019, concluding a prosperous and long career. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby proclaim December 18, 2019, as Frederick W. Follman III Day in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to show their appreciation and gratitude to him for his service to the nation and Hillsborough County, and wishes him the best in his next chapter of life. And this was signed by all the commissioners of Hillsborough County. And we all thank you so much for your service.[498.22][498.22](applause) And thank you also for your service. On behalf, and if you would like to say a few words here?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so, thank you very much. I know this is taking a little time out of your day. I'm sorry. This is taking a little time out of your day, and I appreciate the consideration. Hillsborough County's always been a great partner with MacDill Air Force Base, and I'm sure that that partnership will continue on for years and years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we'll take a question. I think that's where the shorts remarks. Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.
You bet. You bet.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Commissioner Merrill, change this to the agenda.
Yes, Commissioners, we only have one change, which is the removal of an item from consent and moving it to regular. That's the Clerk's County Audit Report on Mobile Device Management, so that is now Item B5. Nothing else has been pulled from the agenda. We have a handful of time certains, three public hearings, beginning at 10:00 a.m. D1 is a public hearing except comments on the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. D2 is a second public hearing and adoption of a resolution designating approximately 19.46 acres as a brownfield area at a parcel located in Ruskin. And the third public hearing, D3, is to conduct the public hearing in accordance with Hillsborough County Order 17-17 for street lighting districts and to approve resolutions for the annexation modifications of street lighting service areas in the county pursuant to the Consolidated Street Lighting Special Purpose District for the year 2020. 10:15, time certain, F4 is Commissioner Miller's item. That's to review, discuss, and select an executive recruiter who the board deems to be the best qualified and offer the overall best proposal. 10:30, Item B1 is a memorandum of understanding between the county, the city of Tampa, Tampa Innovation Alliance, University of South Florida, UACDC, Moffitt Cancer Center, RD Management, and University Community Hospital, that will guide the creation of the Uptown Innovation District and the roles and responsibilities of the parties. 10:45, F2 is a consent agreement with MOZI, Museum of Science and Industry, for the use of the former MOZI West Building by Nothing Like the Sun LLC for filming of a movie. That's Commissioner Hagan's item. And G2 at 11:00 a.m. is a report for the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Organizational Analysis Update. 11:15, B2 is continued for discussion to consider rescheduling November 10, 2020 Land Use Meeting to October 27. 11:30 is the semi-annual activity report from Craig Richard, President and CEO of Tampa Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation. And then 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes.
Have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman to move the changes. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We're now moving to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it's requested that at the same time when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the boardroom. Citizens speaking on agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-agenda items. On addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Three minutes allotted for each speaker. Our first speaker is David McAllister.
Good morning, Commissioners. Might wish it had been a brighter, sunny morning here for the Air Force commemoration here, but we get what we get. It is Christmas time, December. My name's David McAllister. As you know, I come here to advocate for an appreciation for veterans and history, especially that of the period of the war between the states. The Sons of Confederate Veterans, JDP Benjamin Camp, and the United Daughters of the Confederacy, Augusta Jane Williams, Evans Williams Chapter here in Tampa, have participated in the community events here lately for Christmas, basically in two parades, one there at Plant City and one in Zephyr Hills recently. And will be continuing that with Strawberry Festival and other parades that go on as participating in the community. The Wilson Chapter also brought down for these parades from North Carolina, H.K. Edgerton. He's been, he has spoken before this body before, and particularly to be present at the Christmas Open House at Gamble Mansion. I know that's not in Hillsborough County, but it is an example of historic preservation and a fine example of the efficacy of historical tourism, which is why I support Items A, Nine, and Ten, and Eleven, the Historic Preservation Challenge Grants. I'm not exactly sure how the zoo is going to be able to weave in history, but I'm glad that they're getting a grant, too, and especially Ebor City and all. I think that's one of the best programs that Hillsborough provides. You know, the Sons of Confederate Veterans, the United Daughters of the Confederacy has a great appreciation for historical items, and especially our ancestors and their memory. And that is represented by their graves and the markers for their graves, memorials like Memorial in Eternia. And it is very disconcerting to us lately that there has been apparent disrespect by public authorities, not necessarily Hillsborough County here, but public authorities for grave sites, particularly at Zion Cemetery, Ridgewood Cemetery, and Port Tampa Cemetery. This needs to be attended to, if not by Hillsborough County, at least the city of Tampa. These are things that are very disturbing the community, and by disrespecting the past and disrespecting the memorials to former citizens of Tampa, you've set the pace for disrespect. That's not a good thing. We need to respect our ancestors, their graves, and their memorials. Thank you very much.
Joanne O'Brien.
Good morning, Joanne O'Brien, District Three. I'm here on behalf of speaking of our first responders and the Feel Good Foundation and the lawyers for the aftermath of 9/11, in which all the air was toxic for eight months up there. And if we had anybody in this county that went there going digging through the rubble without proper apparatus, I believe they need to go get checked. The phone number for the lawyers, 212-385-8000. And this should go statewide in every state in our union. Being that the 9/11 fund was extended, they will pay for this. And I know this because my son is a victim. He has throat cancer. And I urge, you know, the county to get a hold of our first responders, just to get them checked, to be sure, and get checked every single year. We've lost 40 first responders since September. They're dying every day still in the aftermath of 9/11. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. That's our last speaker for the morning. I have a motion of consent agenda. There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve the consent agenda. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Merrill, we're going to move to regular agenda now?
Yes. Let's go to B4, waiting for staff to be here on B3. B4 is a water resource item. George Cassidy is here for this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Beth Cimello, Water Resources Department. Following the board's decision, direction to purchase the remaining water and wastewater private franchises, Item B4 authorizes the Water Resources Department to begin negotiations for the purchase of the Sunset Plaza and Windermere Private Water and Wastewater Utility Franchises. Upon approval, the Water Department will attempt to negotiate a mutually agreeable purchase price for the private franchises. There's no financial impact at this time. The funding to acquire the private franchises will be determined upon negotiations and will be appropriately approved in the department's budget.
Have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve Item B4. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
If we could go to the board appointments at this time? F1.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we select, I want to pass out something just for everyone to take a quick look at. This is one of the applicants for the Planning Commission that was initially recommended by staff during our, those of you that are on the NPO may have seen this. This was in our NPO backup at our last meeting, where it showed that Mitch Thrower, in addition to being chair of the Planning Commission for at least a third or fourth time, has served on the American Planning Association's Planning Accreditation Board for the past two years. It's, he's responsible for accrediting universities and colleges in North America who offer undergraduate and graduate degrees in planning. And he was appointed with a three-year term in 2017. So I pointed some of this out when we initially had the discussion on the appointments. I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, those of you that were not on the NPO, but to see that in addition to being Planning Commission member, he's chair and represents the Planning Commission nationwide and is most certainly well-deserved of an appointment. Just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Good morning. I just have one comment. It is absolutely wonderful to see that we have 15 candidates to select from. Historically, we've only had a small number, and whatever we did this time is awesome in terms of letting the public know that there's an opportunity to serve not only, you know, our staff and the board, but also to serve the citizens of Hillsborough County. Volunteerism is an honorable act. It's an act of charity and commitment. And to see the amazing number of individuals, all of which are hugely qualified, apply for this is wonderful. So I don't necessarily have anybody to endorse at this point, but I'm very pleased to see that we've had such a robust response. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Okay, so we have two openings on the Planning Commission. Please choose two. Commissioner Miller, and there are two pages.
Okay. Number nine, excuse me, number nine and number 15.
Commissioner Overman.
Nine and seven.
Commissioner White.
Seven and 15.
Commissioner Merman.
Six and 15.
Commissioner Hagan.
Nine and 15.
Commissioner Smith.
Three and 10.
Commissioner Kemp.
Three and 10.
So Mitch Thrower will be one of the applicants or one of the appointees with four votes. Then we have Elizabeth Belcher with two votes, Eric Goldstein with one vote, Jennifer Griggs with two votes, Nigel Joseph with three votes, and Karen Mikowski with two votes. We will vote for just those again, and they have to receive four votes. So it's, I'll give you the numbers. It's three, six, seven, nine, and 10. Commissioner Miller.
Nine.
Commissioner Overman.
Nine.
Commissioner White.
Three.
Commissioner Merman. I'm sorry.
Are you?
Commissioner Merman.
Seven.
Commissioner Hagan.
Nine.
Commissioner Smith.
Three.
Commissioner Kemp.
Three.
So we have two with three votes. That would be Elizabeth Belcher and Nigel Joseph, so we will vote on just those two. Commissioner Miller.
Nine.
Commissioner Overman.
Nine.
Commissioner White.
Three.
Commissioner Merman.
Nine.
Commissioner Hagan.
Nine.
Commissioner Smith.
Three.
Commissioner Kemp.
Three.
It will be Nigel Joseph with four. And then we also have the Land Use Appeals Board. We received one applicant, and he is eligible. David Valver will be the appointed.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Set motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman to confirm the appointments. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Merrill.
Sorry. Yes, Commissioners, B3, later on the agenda at your 10:30 time certain, Item B1, you'll hear a presentation on the memorandum of understanding for the establishment of the Innovation District, the agreement with our major parties, the city of Tampa, USF, and others. Item B3 is another integral piece of the Innovation District. It is the 70 acres of land and facilities that the county owns at the Museum of Science and Industry site. And so B3 is simply to ask the board's permission to begin drafting a request for proposals that we would bring back to the board probably a couple of different times. The RFP would be then soliciting proposals from any and all master developers and others to give us ideas about what to do with the property in the context of the goals of the Innovation District. And so at this point, Tom Voss, if you could just kind of talk about what the RFP would contemplate.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Voss, Assistant County Administrator. As Mike was saying, staff is requesting authorization to prepare a request for proposals to solicit a master developer for the redevelopment of the 74-acre Museum of Science and Industry, or what we refer to as the MOZI site. The county desires to transform the site into a community catalyst to aid the success of the Uptown Innovation District. Consideration will be given to ensure the ongoing and future operations of MOZI, as well as the Insurance Institute for Business and Home Safety, or IBHS, which operates on-site. They've been there about 20 years. As well as other potential uses, such as a film studio and seek-out synergies with other institutional drivers in the Innovation District that have needs for expansion, such as H. Lee Moffett Cancer Center. Once drafted, staff will bring back the RFP for board approval and authorization to advertise. Timing of the RFP shall be integrated with the work associated with the Uptown Innovation District memorandum of understanding, which will be presented later on. And then the financial impacts associated with the development of the RFP are limited and can be accommodated within the Economic Development Department operating budget, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have a motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you for a description of the overall request for proposal. I'd like to ask for two comments to be included as notes for the request. That area has highly sensitive environmental assets that need to be respected in this process. I mean, obviously, us being on the EPC have final say on how that moves to some degree. But there's limited environmental resources in that area. The wetlands in that area are a resource to the area, so making special reference of how that's utilized for green space and to protect those wetlands, I think, is critically important.
And that is our plan as well.
Okay, good. And then secondarily, there is the mention of the railway that's through that area, and I noticed that there's focus on multimodal transit asset as being part of this overall process, so I'm pleased to see that and want to make sure it's emphasized in the response. So thank you very much for putting this together.
You're welcome.
Mr. White, you're recognized.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Just to piggyback on what Commissioner Overman just said, I believe we have some real quality upland resources there as well. I think there are some areas, if I recall correctly, just from driving through there, that have some nice Palmetto understory and things like that. And, you know, as they're developing a landscape, as you and a proposal, you and potential developers are developing a site plan, you know, when it preserved as part of the landscape plan to the greatest extent possible. And, and just an additional comment, this is a great way to sort of serve as a catalyst, as you've said, for the Innovation District and sort of kick that off. I would say that the same holds true for this potential TDR program that we've talked about. So, I would really like to see a TDR component woven into this, if, if it's possible.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I also wanted to make sure to speak to the CSX right-of-way that is there. I think it's very important, as we go forward, to recognize that both our NPO and HART have voted unanimously for us to move forward on the CSX possibility for, for Hillsborough County. And so, I'd like to make sure that whatever happens, it's recognized that that easement is there for transit, a transit easement, that we keep it there because it's placed, very well-placed. And it goes, it would connect right up from Nebraska Avenue, totally just south of Fowler, right to Temple Terrace, and it's, gives us great possibility, not only what's built out, but what remains to be built out, that was never built out. The other question, and, and thank you, I appreciate too, the uplands, the wetlands, it's a huge floodplain there, when you look at those properties, but there are obviously lots of possibilities. What I've been wondering about and trying to figure out in all of this is the future of Mozy. And we haven't really specifically addressed that, to my knowledge, my three years on the Board. It's been part of the big package. So, I would just like to, I just have a few questions. I'm, I'm guessing that the person most appropriately to answer this would be Mr. Merrill. Do we, what, what is, what are the plans right now? What is the exact, what is the status quo of what is going on? Is Mozy still scheduled to move imminently to downtown, within the Vinick plan, or how, what, what is the status of that?
The Mozy Board just recently, last couple of months, hired a museum consultant to look at the entire operations of Mozy, not starting with the location, but starting with the business model, to see what can be done, what should be done to really take Mozy to the next level, looking at its attendance, its exhibit space. Out of that study that's being done will come some recommendations for citing a Museum of Science and Industry. The, as far as I'm aware, the offer from Jeff Vinick is still on the table. I haven't talked with him in a while about it, but someone in the Mozy Board may have. But, I think the Mozy Board wanted to look at all the options and, and not just be focused on one solution. But again, and I met with, I was interviewed by the consultant, and, and they made it very clear, they're not, they're not starting with a site selection. They're starting with what, what's the business? What business should they be in? How do they compare with other Museum of Science and Industries and so forth? So, that's, I think that report is going to be completed in February time, so then that would be brought to the Board and then...
So, you're not aware of Mr. Vinick no longer wanting to move downtown at all? Because, because I've heard different information about that. And I'll just say this, I think that the Museum of Science and Industry is an incredible asset to this community and a really important thing for us to be supportive of and grow. The Tampa Bay Partnership did a list of the twenty other communities that we, they consider us competitive with, of which we ranked low on a lot of different scales. And I looked up all twenty of those areas, including Raleigh, Charlotte, Dallas, Austin, Portland, Seattle, South Florida, Jacksonville, wherever you look, they have extremely robust museums of science and industry. Several of them have free, they don't even charge to, to get in. That's the kind of community support that they have. And right now, the footprint of what we have is, is extremely limited, what we're doing. And so, I'm, I'm really interested, I really want to know, I think, before we start making other arrangements for the property, that we need to really be thinking about what is going, where the Museum of Science and Industry is going to be and what it's going to be. So, I'm just very concerned about that as part of this footprint, or that we have very firm, solid plans about moving it if, if, if the idea is not to have it there or have it there in some very limited fashion.
And I guess if I could just add, we will not be coming back to you with the draft RFP for at least three to six months. The consultant report, my understanding, should be done within the next three months, so we should have that information. And if I could also add, I've personally been in discussions with the NPO, DOT, and HART, reference transit and the transit development, how we can leverage that on that site. And we'll continue that dialogue as well. The other thing I really want to highlight is this RFP is for a master developer, because we're not looking to just surplus the site to, to one person or anything like that. We want the master developer to come in to help us look at the various uses that we could have on that site, whether it's Mozy, whether it's a partial film studio, or, or something else associated with, like we talked about Moffett and that kind of stuff. So, we're just trying to set ourselves up so that we can do the right kind of development on that site.
And I just want, one, thank you so much for clarifying all that. And one other concern, I'm not sure whether, which of these two, B1 or B3 it was on, was in terms of housing, and one of the things was that accessible housing, rather than affordable housing, which again is, I think, something this Board has talked about. So, just, I'm just thinking that that should be part of what we're thinking about also.
It is. We were trying to be consistent with the language that was in the MOU as well, so that's why we use those terms.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll make this brief because some of the comments have been made. I just, I'm happy to hear that transportation's going to be a key element of the RFP. I think that's critical. But, I think the big picture is, I mean, this site, it could be a huge game-changer in the area. And that's why I really like the direction that we're headed with the master developer to give us what the options are, because, you know, you look at the bookends, you've got the mall, and then this, and then you have the university in the center. I mean, it's just, it's a perfect scenario for, to really uplift the community that's, that has surrounded USF for a long time. It's really been, I don't want to say neglected, but I think it's just kind of gone along over the years, and nothing's really, I mean, nobody's really done anything with it. I know part, most of that area is in the city of Tampa, and, you know, so I, I think this is going to be very, very uplifting to the whole community. And I, if it's done right, I think we're going to have something that we're really going to be very proud of, so...
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom stated this, and it's in our backup. I just want to stress that, that I'm pleased that the RFP will consider, not necessarily mandate, but will consider a film studio in either the Mozy Building or, or on property. There's certainly a significant nexus and synergies between film and digital media and the goals of the Innovation District and STEAM. And I'm not going to speak for, for Mark Sharp, but I can tell you that he also sees the value of, of potentially having a film studio on this property. So, I'm pleased to see that it'll at least be considered throughout this process.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, just briefly to say that I agree with just about everything that's been said here about the importance of environmental protection, affordable housing, but I wanted to highlight the transfer of development rights. I know that's a sticky wicket. It's tough to, to make that work, but it's a, a good opportunity for us as we are considering increasing densities in that area. That's a place where we want density. Let's look at the big picture of the whole county and see if this can be an opportunity for transferring the development rights from the places that we might have granted too much in decades past, now that we have a, a different priorities and frame of reference today. So, it could be a good opportunity for win-win. I just wanted to, to highlight that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B3. I'm not going to say anything, it's my district. I think enough has been said. Please record your vote.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Takes us to item F3, which is Commissioner Kemp's item.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Yes. I put this item on with regards to park impact fees. As you all know, I've been looking at impact fees and looking at how they compare to other communities. And so, I began looking at the park impact fees that are collected from developers to support parks, particularly in South Hillsborough County, where, as we know, we've been inundated with residential development occurring at a rapid pace. The rate for these park impact fees has not been significantly updated since they were established in 1985, which, in all these things I've looked at, kind of sets a record for decades of not reviewing the park impact fees. Hillsborough County impact fees for parks are far lower than many other counties, including Broward, Collier, Dade, Lee, Manatee, Orange, Osceola, Pasco, Palm Beach, and St. John's. For example, a single-family home constructed in Collier County, a developer must pay a park fee, impact fee totaling $3,628, or $4,148, depending on the size of the home. To build a three-bedroom home in Wy Mama, a developer would only contribute $223 to support parks. That's a $3,000 to $4,000 difference in, in our park impact fees. We do have a, it's unusual, maybe because it was so old that, when we did it, but we have different fee districts that we have, whereas I haven't discovered that in any other county that I've looked at. It has a same fee everywhere, and the fees that were set in 1985 are extraordinarily low in South County. As I said, fees in the other counties are charged uniform throughout the county. We have our different rates. And maybe we could show, I don't know if we have it, do we have it up there, the map showing our districts, our park, our fee, impact fee districts for parks? No? Okay, I thought we did. Okay. The impact fees for parks in South Hillsborough County are the lowest of all in the county, almost half as low as fees in Northwest Hillsborough. And that's for every three-bedroom home built in the Odessa area, the impact fee for parks is $421. However, to construct the same home in Baum, or Wy Mama, is again, $223 in fees to support parks in South Hillsborough. This discount in South Hillsborough denies funding for parks in this rapidly growing area. These low fees violate the comprehensive plan, which requires developers in the rural service area, including the RP2 and WVR, to cover all public costs created by growth. So, I'm, my recommended motion is that we direct staff to come back to the Board with recommendations, and I do have, I do have a question regarding this. Let me ask that first.
Commissioner Kemp, you've started your motion. Need to finish your motion before you go to a question.
Okay. Direct staff to come back to the Board with recommendations to update park impact fees, make the fees uniform throughout the county, require regular updates to the fees, and cancel the discount on park impact fees currently in effect for developers in South Hillsborough County, and set this for a public hearing on February 19, 2020.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there is any, I've heard differing accounts. Is there, has there been a park impact fee study done? Is it available, or has, has anything been done at all in this regard?
There was a Parks Master Plan done a couple of years ago that was presented to the Board. Not aware of any recent park impact fee study, though, so that would have to be done first.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
And thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for digging up all these discrepancies and anomalies in our impact fee structure. Citizens across the county have been calling on us to make development pay its fair share of infrastructure costs and to ease the burden on the taxpayers. So, I'm very grateful to your office for doing all this research. You've recently found that the RP2 area outside the Urban Services area was given a discount in its mobility fees, and that's something we need to rectify. And I know you've been looking at these other fees that have been not raised for decades. And this one here with the parks turns out to be another piece of really low-hanging fruit in that regard, of places where we could help make developers pay their fair share, ease the burden on the taxpayers. I don't, I don't know why it hadn't been offered earlier, but I appreciate your bringing it forward. So, I want to make sure that it's clear now that, that we as a Board are looking for ways to get development to pay for itself, and that I'm hoping that the administration will help us find these sorts of ways, especially these, you know, it all doesn't have to be done in, in a piece. Piece by piece, we can start to rectify this history of the burden being on the taxpayers, our county's impact fees being lower than surrounding counties, our impact fees not being raised for decades. So, you know, I just would hope that the administration would start bringing these forward, these opportunities forward to us as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I have a question for the county attorney. So, accord, there, the ordinance that's in place for these impact fees, as I understand, there has to be a study done before anything can be done, and done on the actual impact fee. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Merman. The studies for each of the four types, there's technically still four types of impact fees in that ordinance, although transportation is really phasing out because it was replaced with mobility fees. Schools, parks, and fire rescue are all still in that ordinance. Each, each of their studies are part of that ordinance. So, the text changes that would take place in terms of the implementing of language in administration are relatively straightforward. The meat of it is really the study. And, and true, it, it hasn't been updated, it is the original study, I believe, since 1985. And yes, that, that is really the meat of this change right there.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry. Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney.
Can I keep asking you some questions?
Of course.
So, we have addressed the fire impact fees, right?
In June, yes.
Okay. And so, that's the school, the mobility, and the, then the parks.
Parks, correct.
So, again, I'm, I'm going to stay pretty steadfast in my, how I think these impact fees should be addressed, given the fact that we need a study anyway. I'm going to make a substitute motion that this, a park impact fee study be done, but also that the park impact fee be a part of the discussion, or the work that the economist that, that Mr. Merrill, I guess we've secured an economist, who's going to give us, you know, come back to us with what they think is the best way to address these impact fees going forward. Because I think it needs to be looked at holistically and not just piecemeal. And since we have the economists on board, we have, get a study done, I think this motion is appropriate for moving forward, so that's my motion.
That's your substitute.
to us with what they think is the best way to address these impact fees going forward. Because I think it needs to be looked at holistically and not just piecemeal. And since we have the economists on board, we have to get a study done. I think this motion is appropriate for moving forward. So that's my motion.
That's your substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner White to the substitute motion.
Not to the substitute.
Commissioner Overman to the substitute motion.
In, in this study, I'm trying to understand some of what I'm seeing in your, your backup materials. There was a mention of a discount in South County, and I was trying to figure out what... I haven't read the resolution, I apologize, to determine how the discount was determined. But, you know, one of the things that we're talking, we have a series of workshops to address all of our fees, and impact fees, you know, mobility fees, all the, all the others, and see what that economic impact is. We also have had lots of discussion about changing in our comprehensive plan and how we build communities, you know, where we want amenities in communities instead of having one way in, one way out, and, you know, you have to get in a car to go to a park, instead of looking at how our communities are built to require maybe parks, or those amenities that make a community a whole community. So I, in this study, we need to at least make sure that we're addressing some of the conversations we've had where we are looking for opportunities to partner with our home builders and our developers on creating complete communities. If a discount feature is part of that, then it should require that complete community approach to their development. And that would be the only place that I would see a discount might be available. But again, I haven't, unfortunately, I don't know what that metric was, but it is very clear. We have not addressed our fees in way too long. And if we asked a developer to do a park, it certainly wouldn't be at that cost there. So I do agree that it's important to do the study, and I do agree that it's important we, we set the conversation for address, and that when in our workshops, as we address our fees, that this be part of the equation.
Commissioner Kemp to the substitute motion.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to say that, of course, we have, need studies for all this. I was trying to, first of all, figure out if we had had one sitting there. And second, I named that date because that was the date that somehow we're going to have all this information by an economist without a study. And I really want to put a bit of a fire underneath this process to start. I don't see why we can't, you know, have a study. This is a pretty... It's not like a mobility study, mobility fee study. It's a much more limited type of study to do. So I'd like to really get this remedied. It's only been three decades, and I'm very disappointed that it hasn't been brought forward in the past year as I've waited. I feel too long for any, any of this to come forward. We've had so little. So anyway, I'll, you know, I'm, I think we need to move forward with all due haste, and I'm not going to support the substitute, but, you know, there might be, there might be something else.
Commissioner White to the substitute motion.
Can staff at a high level, county attorney staff or county administrator staff, at a high level, in two minutes or less, just explain to me why the fees are so much lower in the South Zone?
Commissioner White, I'd have to speculate because that's going to be data that was generated by a study that frankly, even the census data from that would have been from the 1980s census. So the consultant, I suspect the discount was gen... This is speculation, but I suspect the discount was generated because at that time, in the mid-1980s, when they were showing the impacted development types, there were, there are different zones. The zones, unlike with mobility fees, we only have two assessment zones. You have an urban and rural assessment zone, but you have five benefit zones. The zones for the old impact fee ordinance were the same. Assessment and benefit were the same zone. So what I suspect was that the data at that time showed that development in South County was having a less of an impact on park system, and so it would have come in with a lower fee. That isn't something... So a new study would be based on obviously current data. There's obviously been a lot of development in South County since that time. In fact, even the zone boundaries themselves would be analyzed to see if they're still relevant or if those boundaries needed to be shifted. That would all be, I think, included in the study, I would imagine.
Would the... I'm, I'm just going to ask Mr., Mr. Clark this question, just your understanding of the motion. Would the study in Commissioner Murman's motion get us to a place of uniformity throughout the county in terms of, of these fees?
Well, I'd have to gain a clear understanding of the motion. I, is, is it to... I think that the uniformity, all impact fees are really subject to the data that's generated as far as the impact that different land use has, land use types have on different public facilities. With parks and schools, the only development that is subject to that fee is residential development, which is unlike mobility or fire rescue, those are charged to residential and non-residential development. So in that context, I suppose the study might be more limited in scope because it's only studying residential impacts as opposed to non-residential. But as far as uniformity, as far as zone boundaries and things such as that, that would really be something that we'd have to see what the consultant produced.
Right. And there's some speculation there on my part. I mean, I strongly suspect that, you know, given the explosive growth that we've experienced in South County, that the study is almost certainly to get us, you know, more to a place of, of uniformity in terms of, of the fees throughout the county. Okay.
Commissioner Murman, to your motion.
I'm just going to kind of bring this in for a landing here, though. I see we have one more speaker. Yeah, I don't know. How long does it take? We have to hire a consultant to do the study, and this is per the ordinance. So you, I mean, to have a hard, fast, I mean, going back to the original motion with a hard, fast date, I think, I don't know. Mr. Merrill, can you answer the question?
Well, so a lot of the preliminary work is done because there was a Parks Master Study done two years ago. We should bring that study back to the board because there's new members. The Parks Master Plan, just like schools and water, wastewater, forms the basis then for the impact fee study. The impact is charged based on the assets that are going to be built, the parks and so forth. So I would guess, then, that doing the impact fee study would take a shorter period of time because now the core of it, it's already done, subject to the board making changes to the master plan. So we'd have to select a consultant. I mean, if we, if we fast-tracked it, I think we could probably get something done in the next, by April.
Right.
I just, I don't, I just, I can't give you a real hard date on it. It's just...
Right. But...
Maybe we'd move as quickly as possible.
We'll be able to use the information from the...
Master plan.
Master plan. When the, the economist that you're securing to do all these other fees, he'll be able to use some of that information in looking at the park fees as part of the big picture of what he's looking at. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I think that's why the substitute motion's appropriate because I, I, you know, to direct for a public hearing on the 19th, I just don't think is feasible at this point to get the information. And again, going back to Commissioner White's comments, the uniformity of the information that needs to come back to us, I think, is really critical. As we all know, we don't have, I mean, that's why the Waterset Sports Complex is so important in South County. We haven't done anything down there in a major way to address sports, parks, anything. And that's where all the growth is. And I think that this is why it's very important to take, go through a process, take the necessary steps, and not try and rush this to come to a conclusion that would not serve our residents very well. Because all these fees do, I'll be honest with you. I know we're saying we're making the developers pay, but guess what? The people that have to pay are the homebuyers, because the fees are getting passed on to them. So, and new homebuyers. Yeah.
I could suggest a motion, because I don't think either Commissioner Kemp's or your, your approach is at odds with each other.
Right.
So the first, I think the first motion would be to direct us to bring back to the board the Parks Master Plan, for you to review it. It would spend a couple of years. That needs to be done. Make sure that what's in the master plan is what you want. At the same time, to direct us to, as quickly as we can, hire a, a consultant to do the park impact fee study. And we can look at state contracts to see if there are qualified consultants. That will shorten the time to get someone on board, so we can then start the Parks Impact Fee Study immediately or as soon as we can. And then those two things come back together to the board, and you can then decide on levels of impact fees and so on and so forth.
Right.
So that, that could move this along more quickly, and you have dual tracks then.
Right. And so, I, I mean, my substitute motion had the study in there, so I think that's in there. But what's not in there is the bringing back the Parks Master Plan for a review by the board.
So do you want to amend your substitute motion?
Yes. I would like to make an amendment to the substitute motion to include bringing back the Mas, the Parks Master Plan Study for this board to review to move forward.
An amendment to the substitute motion by Commissioner Murman. Is there a second?
In January.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman and Commissioner White. Commissioner Smith, you're going to address the amendment to the substitute motion?
Sure. I just want to say that, again, thank you for bringing this forward. We would not be having this discussion or the substitute motion or any movement at all towards this without you bringing this forward. And every time we talk about raising impact fees, we talk about delay. We talk about a study. We talk about bringing in an economist. And every month we delay, and every large development we approve, before we've, we've put impact fees at a level that they can actually pay for their infrastructure...
Commissioner Smith.
Is money in...
Address the amendment.
The developers' pockets. I'm addressing the delay.
No, you're not.
That, and not, that is being taken out of the taxpayers' pockets. So it's, it, we're still having it uneven the more we slow this down.
Commissioner Kemp, to the amendment to the substitute motion.
Thank you. Yes, I'd just like to say that, did you say, I didn't catch a date, January, or what did, what was the...
To bring the Parks Master Plan back here, yes, in January.
And...
January. We can bring it back January 8th, the first meeting in January.
I really want, and I heard you say April, to expedite this, which I think is really important, to have a deadline on this. I mean, I've waited a year, and I thought something was going to come forward this year. And now I realize a whole year has gone by, and nothing has come forward in this. And that's why I'm starting to move on these myself, because I just, you know, feel like there seems to be no sense of urgency after three decades. And so, so can we include in there also, and, you know, to, to have this brought back by April?
Well, so I think, again, two things I'm recommending. One is get the Parks Master Plan before you again at January 8th, so we can be sure we're dealing with everyone's vision. The second part of the motion would be then to direct us to immediately secure a consultant to do the impact fee study. And as I said, if we can find someone who's on state contract, then we don't have to go through our own procurement. That shortens it, as long as they're qualified. We could theoretically then have a, a impact fee consultant on board in the next 30 days to do the impact fee study.
Right.
And that could be done perhaps in 60 days. I don't know. But, I mean, you have to have an impact fee study.
Let's get out of the mud and make this clear, okay? Mr. Merrill has, has offered the possibility of a motion, and he's, he's tied it all in. We're piecemealing it. So I'm going to ask you, Mr. Commissioner Murman, to withdraw your amendment and withdraw your substitute motion, and make your substitute motion exactly what Mr. Merrill has said.
Okay. Okay. My original substitute did have the study in there, but it wasn't as explicit, so I will be glad to restate it.
Okay, withdraw your amendment.
I will withdraw the amendment and the substitute and restate the substitute.
And matter is what Mr. Murman is, what Mr. Murman.
Mr. Murman?
Mr. Merrill has said, Mr. Merrill, would you, would you repeat it one more time so we get clarity?
Yes. So you, the motion would be to direct us to bring back to your January 8th meeting the Parks Master Plan for board discussion and revision, if necessary, and adoption of the plan. The second part of the motion would be to direct us to immediately secure a impact fee consultant, and to look at the state contract and other means to, to shorten the time of procurement, and bring that selection back as soon as possible.
So, Mr. Murman, is that your substitute motion? Is there a second by Commissioner Hagan's deal? Okay. All right. So understand what we did, everyone. Commissioner Murman withdrew her original amendment and her original substitute motion, and she's restating a new substitute motion, but she's made the motion, and Commissioner Hagan has seconded it. I see no one in the queue. We're now going to vote on the substitute motion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Okay. That takes us to our 10:00 AM time certance, our three public hearings, beginning with D one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Services, good to be here this morning. I am here to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. That's our HUD report. To close the public comment period, which began on November 18th, and to approve submittal of the caper to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Approval of this item will have no financial impact.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D one? Anyone wishing to address item D one? To close the public hearing, is there a motion?
Submit.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item D one. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you, Cheryl. D two.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Kimball, Economic Development Director. This is the second public hearing for the designation of a brownfield area, which is at the parcel located at the southwest intersection of 16th Avenue Southeast and 12th Street East Southeast in Ruskin. On October 14th, SM Ruskin Development LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel as a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 19.6, I'm sorry, 19.46 acres. And brownfields are areas of real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual or perceived environmental contamination. The applicant plans to develop the property for low-density residential development. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the applicant associated with cleanup of the site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. At the second public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners, the board shall designate the brownfield area if SM Ruskin Development LLC establishes the following. One, that SM Ruskin LLC owns or controls a potential brownfield site, is requesting the designation, and has agreed to rehabilitate and redevelop the brownfield site. Two, that the rehabilitation and redevelopment of the proposed brownfield site will result in economic productivity of the area, along with the creation of five new permanent jobs, affordable housing, or the creation of recreational areas, conservation areas, or parks. Three, that the redevelopment of the proposed site is consistent with the local comprehensive plan and is permissible use under the applicable local land development regulations. Four, that notice of the proposed rehabilitation of the brownfield area has been provided to the neighbors and nearby, nearby residents of the proposed area to be designated pursuant to Section 376.801(c) Florida statutes. And the person proposing the area for designation has afforded to those receiving notice the opportunity for comments and suggestions about rehabilitation, and notice has been posted in the affected areas. Five, that SM Ruskin LLC has provided reasonable assurance that it has sufficient financial resources to implement and complete the rehabilitation agreement and redevelopment of the brownfield site. An advertised community meeting on this designation was held at Ruskin Park and Rec Center on December 11th, 2019. No public comment was received. The first public hearing was held on December 4th, 2019, and no public comment was received. Staff has reviewed the application, the applicable criteria, and staff recommendation is for approval of the resolution designating the brownfield area. I, along with the applicant's representatives and Vivian Arenas Baddals with County Attorney's Office, are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold up, hold up. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D two? Anyone wishing to address item D two? Close the public hearing. Have a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Murman to approve item D two. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And final public hearing, D three.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations. This is a public hearing for the annual approval of modifications to the Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Lighting Special Purpose District in accordance with Hillsborough County Ordinance 1717. This request includes the addition of three new street lighting areas. The modification- includes the addition of three new streetlighting areas. The modifications have met all requirements of the Streetlighting Special Purpose District, and this public hearing was duly advertised in accordance with statute.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item D3? Anyone wishing to address item D3? Close of public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Hagan to approve item D3. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Commissioner, if you want to waive the rules and take your 10:15 time certain, I think everyone's here. You could do that if you like.
Motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Murman to waive the rules and take up item F4. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Before we take up F4, we've got to take a recess so that staff can set up the communication system for one of our clients. So we are standing recess until 10:20.
Mr. Merrill will be leaving us, uh, June thirtieth. Uh, this board, uh, at one of its meetings directed, uh, Mr. Strommer and the procurement department, uh, to solicit RFPs to look at firms that would do executive search. He has done that. He's given you the material that, uh, you had a time op- an opportunity to look at that. Uh, there were six, um, firms. One firm withdrew last night, and that is, uh, Colin Bissinger and Associates. They withdrew. Uh, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Strommer to give us, uh, the brief remarks on the process and what he did. And then he's going to give it back to me. Uh, we'll go through another little process, and I'll have a motion to be made at the end of that. Mr. Strommer, good morning.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Scott Stromper, procurement services. Again, the board did approve the scope of work. We did receive six proposals. Uh, as the chairman indicated, one did pull out last night. Uh, just for reasons that he had taken on some work and want to make sure he could commit the time, and he couldn't do that for us. So five firms are here today. We do have one firm on the phone. Heidi Voorhees with Gov HR is on the phone. The rest of the firms are represented behind me. So they're here and are prepared to give you a little three-minute pitch, uh, and then answer questions if you desire. That's purely to your direction. The criteria that we were given, I set it up to all the criteria have equal weight, uh, in the package. So you have great latitude to select, given the importance of this selection, and it's very unique. You have great latitude to pick the overall best qualified firm. After this, if you do select a firm, we'll immediately finalize the pricing, we'll post the notice, and we'll move along very, very quickly. Because this is something we're probably just a little bit behind. We need to get this started as quickly as possible. So the firm starts working and interviewing you in January to develop that candidate profile so they can get started. So with that, I, I welcome the board's discussion and, and your direction.
Thank you, Mr. Stromper. Board members, it's up to you. Uh, we could have each firm make a three-minute pitch as to why we should select them, or we can just go in directly into questions. You could ask whatever firm you really want to ask questions. So, uh, it's up to you. It's your pleasure. Commissioner White, you recognize?
I'd like to hear a three-minute pitch from each of them, and, and to be fair and assure that they all get an equal amount of time, I'd like to use the timer.
Okay. We'll have each firm, uh, do a three-minute pitch. I know that, uh, Gov HR USA is on the phone and will not see the timer. So when we get to the three minutes, I will say, when we get to thirty seconds, I will let you know your thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds, and then I will say your time is up to Gov HR. Who we will, which we will start with Gov HR who's on the phone. So each firm will give a three-minute spiel as to why we should, uh, consider you for, uh, this Gov, this search. And, uh, at the end of that, we have any questions, then at the end of questions, I'm gonna take the floor back and make a motion. Mr. Stromper, does that work for you?
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Okay. We're gonna start with Gov HR USA. They're on the phone. Am I correct?
Yes, I'm on the phone.
Good morning. Good morning.
Are you ready?
Yes, yes. You're gonna have three minutes, and I will let you know when you have thirty seconds left and when your time is up. So good morning, and you have your three minutes starting now.
Okay, thank you so much, and I'm very sorry that I couldn't be wi- down there with you today. I just couldn't tear myself away from our thirteen degrees here in Chicago. But it's a pleasure to be able to talk with you about our firm. Gov HR is, I co-own it with Joellen Katamatory. We're a certified woman-owned business. Uh, we've worked in thirty-two different states, including Florida, and we have eleven full-time and eight part-time employees. Uh, as a firm, we are committed to, uh, always doing a national outreach for recruitment because we like to say, you never know who wants to come home. Uh, we make extensive use of social media, and one of our, our core values is a commitment to diversity and inclusion in our processes and in our practices. We are regularly, uh, we regularly financially support and attend and speak at conferences, not only for the International City and County Management Association, but the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, the Local Government Hispanic Network, and we are, uh, we were founding members of the League of Women in Government, uh, both nationally and the Legacy Project in Illinois. So we're very active in these organizations, which allows us to, um, get to know the up-and-comers in the profession and stay in touch with, uh, the more experienced members. Uh, we believe strongly in a partnership with our clients, with the county commission. Uh, we will work, we will interview you individually and as a group to understand what you would be seeking in your next county administrator. And then, uh, we, we also feel very strongly about transparency and making sure that if you want to see all of the resumes, that is absolutely fine with us at any point in the process. Uh, we also develop a matrix that hits on each of the candidates' key abilities. Uh, our screening process includes video interviewing, and we can also provide you with, uh, video clips of the finalist candidates if that's something that you're interested in. We're with you from the beginning to the end. Uh, we sit in on the interviews, provide you with draft questions that you can edit in advance, and we're there to make sure, and sit in the back of the room and make sure that the process is running smoothly. Uh, we're very proud of our outreach efforts. Uh, we subscribe to a national database of potent, of all of the emails of every city and county manager in the country, and we also use social media and personal outreach to attract candidates and tell them about the opportunity. Uh, we'd love the, the chance to work with you. I am the consultant assigned to the project. Uh, I've worked in neighboring Pinellas County, Kent County, Michigan, Lake County, Illinois, Johnson County, Kansas. So have a deep understanding of county government. So thank you again for the opportunity to talk with you today.
Thank you very much.
Would the speaker please identify themselves for the record?
Ma'am, we need your name. Hello, ma'am? Are you still there?
I'm still here, yeah. Do you want me to stay on in case you have questions at the end?
Uh, yes, stay on, but we need your name.
My name is Heidi Voorhees.
Heidi Voorhees, okay. Thank you. Okay. Potheimer and Associates? Morning.
Morning.
You have a timer right there in front of you.
I do. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I came down from Washington DC last night, and, uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity for, for asking us to participate in this process and being considered. Um, some of you know me from some work I've done here locally in the area. I've worked on the CEO recruitments for TIBARDA and for Heart, uh, for PSTA here locally. Um, I am based in Washington DC. I'm one of three partners in our practice. Um, I've been with the firm for about fifteen years and lead our state and local government, public transit, utility, and, uh, and other public sector areas of practice. When I came down here this morning, I had the opportunity to go run along the riverfront and, and noticed, and, and to me, part of the recruiting process is being able to sell the community and the opportunity of why this is the right place to come and work. And when I was running along the riverfront, I had the opportunity to see University of South Florida, uh, the, the University of Tampa. Uh, I saw the Children's Museum. I saw the Art Museum and, and things like that. I heard you this morning talking about parks and recreation schools, and I recognize some of the challenges you're facing as a community in terms of housing, affordable housing, education, healthcare, things like that. And I recognize that those are really important issues, and finding another, uh, county administrator who can work with you, partner with you, to advance those issues and execute on what your vision is and, and, and delivering that. So from my perspective, in terms of doing a recruitment, it's going out there and doing a national recruitment, going and looking for the most diverse slate of candidates absolutely possible, and trying to find those individuals who have done like-type things in other communities that can come here and help lead and lead the staff and lead the community, work with your residents, work with your, your visitors and, and the Tampa Bay Partnership, and, and, and advance transportation, make this a place that's affordable for everybody and, and a place where everybody can, can advance and, and be successful as a community. I will work with you. I am the partner. I am the recruiter who will work with you in this process. Um, and I will be here present to, to not only present candidates, um, but also, um, to work with you through this process. Um, one of the other things I wanted to point out is I've done a lot of work, but both nationally and also locally within the state of Florida and other communities like Orlando, Miami, Jacksonville. I, I brought the CEO in of that Jacksonville Chamber, and I am familiar with the sunshine law requirements of the state of Florida, and I recognize that this is a transparent process. And I think we've designed a process that's worked effectively and worked well to help our clients in terms of making sure we balance that transparency need. So I want to thank you for that opportunity and, and look forward to the opportunity of potentially working with you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
My name is Greg Moser. Thank you.
Norlock and Associates? Good morning. The timer's right there in front of you. Please state your name.
Renee Norlock, Norlock and Associates. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and present before you. Uh, it's an exciting time for the county to be looking for a new county administrator, and we'd certainly like to be part of that process. A little bit about myself, I am the president of Norlock and Associates. Our home office is in Tallahassee, Florida. We have a satellite office in Georgetown, Texas, which is just outside of Austin. A little bit about me, I'm a native of Florida. I grew up in the Panhandle and, um, uh, moved to Tallahassee to go to school and raised my family there, and, uh, I happened to get involved with a public sector recruiting firm, uh, search firm, actually a, a, a public sector consultant services fir- firm there, which did a lot of users' fee studies and, uh, a lot of impact fees, uh, studies and things like that. So I got, I, I learned about the business, uh, through that company, but then they also added recruitment to it. Uh, I geared toward that and, uh, had a good run at it with the, with another firm, and then went out on my own back in two thousand and fourteen. So I am the president of the company. I will be your consultant. We've been in business for six years now. It was a seamless transition. We've been very busy. And, um, I think it's important, not only that you get the right firm, but that you get the right consultant, uh, to work with you because it's gonna be a real tight partnership going forward here on this search. You need to feel confident. You need to feel comfortable. We need to make sure that we work in such a way that this process goes very smooth for you, uh, that we don't go off the rails, that we keep it moving forward, and, uh, we're very mindful of that. We have a very good process. As I mentioned, I've been, well, I've been doing this for twenty-five years now. I've been around the block a few times. Uh, some of the larger counties that I've worked with in a county administrator recruitment capacity is, uh, Wake County, which is Raleigh, uh, Franklin County, which is Columbus, Ohio, uh, and in Florida, Palm Beach County, the county administrator position there. Excuse me. You'll find that all of our clients tend to call us back for more searches, so there's a long list of projects that we have done. But those are the county administrator searches that stand out to me. Uh, current projects include a county administrator for York County, uh, South Carolina, uh, which is outside the Charlotte area. We're currently doing three searches for a small entity in central Florida, and, uh, and then we're doing the city attorney for the city of Dallas, Texas, so, uh, more high-profile position. So with our, our, our jobs vary, the types of positions vary. And, uh, as far as work that we've done here, we've done a couple of director recruitments for Hillsborough County. Uh, they were very successful. And, um, one that I'm really proud of is the Children's Board of Hillsborough County. We did the executive director recruitment, uh, and we're very proud of that. I think that was an excellent, if you know the history of that, they were facing a vote, the, going out to the voters the following year to sustain their funding. And that was a hard search, uh, but we were very successful in that. That said, we have an understanding of, uh, certainly Florida and the sunshine, and we certainly hope to be considered for this project moving forward, and happy holidays to each of you.
Same to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Salvon Management Consultants? I'm sorry, Slaven. I can read, I'd be all right. Good morning. State your name, sir.
I'm Bob Slaven, Slaven Management Consultants.
Yes, tab in front of you.
Mister Chairman and members of the, uh, board. Slaven Management Consultants is a company I founded in nineteen ninety-one. I've been doing local government recruiting since the late seventies. Uh, our company is based in Atlanta. Uh, we're specialists in local government, uh, recruiting. We, our work has included clients in forty-six of the fifty states. Uh, we've placed over eight hundred and fifty, uh, executives in, in counties and cities around the United States. Our Florida experience is extensive. We've worked for fifty-three entities here in the state. Sixteen of those entities were counties. Thirteen of those, uh, uh, clients, for thirteen of those clients, we've placed, uh, county administrative officers. And in total, we've placed, or I've placed or have managed the placement of over thirty county executives in, uh, uh, Florida, California, uh, uh, which included places as large as Los Angeles County and, and rather small places. But, um, the process we use is thorough. It's based on criteria you established, not anything we pull off a shelf and bring here. The whole, um, uh, process is tied very strictly and tightly to criteria you set. It, uh, and we need to spend a lot of time at the beginning of the process making sure that we understand what you're looking for, and, uh, then translate that into a plan of action and go out and find folks and recruit them and bring them to you and evaluate them. Uh, I can go into many more detail, much more detail about that if you want. Uh, the, we're thorough. We're timely. Our, uh, processes are up to date. We've, uh, we use a strategic planning process. Once we know what you're looking for, we decide how to, uh, accomplish, uh, that, uh, goal of, of, of meeting your needs and doing it, uh, in an efficient and effective way. Well, I'm very proud of the team that we've put together for, to address this issue. I'll manage it, uh, but I've got two, uh, outstanding colleagues who will be working with me on it. One of them is Barbara Lipscomb, who's a former Florida Assistant Manager. Actually, she was, uh, uh, interim manager in Gainesville and, uh, also in Lakeland, but she's also been a manager in Greenville, North Carolina, uh, and, uh, the city manager in Castleberry here in Florida. Dave Krings, uh, who was former ICMA president and actually the founding, uh, 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 person for NACA and been president of NACA, National Association of County Administrators, manager in Hamilton County, was manager in Hamilton County. Both Barbara and Dave are sort of, uh, uh, ICMAC certified managers, which is a process that involves a lot of training and testing. Uh, myself, I have forty years of experience in this business. I'll be the team leader. The, uh, uh, I've started my career in county government in Santa Clara County in California. I know counties, worked for a lot of counties, uh, over the years, um, and have managed, uh, over, uh, I think I've reached the thirty-second mark. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Lastly, Strategic Government Resources?
Good morning. Doug Thomas for the record. Thank you very much for your consideration of utilizing SGR as part of your recruitment process for your successor county administrator. Uh, as someone who brings about thirty-five years of experience in local government, I will tell you it is arguably probably the most important decision you make as an elected official. As background, I want to tell you a little bit about SGR. We were founded in nineteen ninety-nine as a full-service local government operation. Uh, we provide consulting services in recruitment. Obviously, we're here for today. Live and online training, leadership development, interim management, strategic visioning, regional and national conferences that we hold, and a variety of other consulting services to promote, uh, leadership and innovation in local government. Additionally, we are regular speakers at state and national conferences, talking about best management practices, leading-edge trends, and issues involving local government. And I say that in the sense that as a result of all the things that we do, we're fully ingrained in the issues and opportunities and challenges you face in local government. I think that distinguishes us from firms that are solely involved as executive recruitment firms because we understand, and it's in our DNA in terms of the operations you're involved with. Uh, our process clearly starts with understanding your needs by interviewing all of you individually and collectively, including any constitutional officers, senior staff members, and any stakeholders you may have in terms of your public-private partnerships that you come into play. And that will help us develop a, a comprehensive, uh, profile and a brochure that we will professionally design and market the position. It will tell you that any recruiter can certainly get you a stack of qualified applicants. Our job is to find the one that fits your particular goals, objectives, and insights that you're trying to get together, uh, for your, for your successor position. Uh, I think that you'll find our outreach is, is very, uh, extensive and quite frankly outstanding in terms of what we do to help promote the position. Uh, clearly, it starts with the brochure that I mentioned earlier. That will be sent out and utilized on our particular outreach mechanisms. I want to highlight a little bit about some of those things that we utilize that I think is important for you to know. Uh, every week, we have newsletters that go out to over fifty thousand local government professionals across the country. Uh, your position will be featured regularly in that to cast that opportunity out there. It will also be included, obviously, in our job board and on our website. Our job board is the second-largest job board, public sector job board in the country. Uh, we, I want to highlight the, that fact because most of your candidates are going to use social media as a component, and they also will consider themselves passive candidates. And so our outreach is very, very extensive in that regard. Uh, I'm a former, uh, city manager of Lakeland, Florida, a comparable neighboring community, close to three thousand employees. Have operated there for about twelve years. I joined the firm four years ago. I'm a poster child because I joined the firm after I saw the quality of work they did, and the principal of the firm asked me to come onboard on a full-year basis. So I, uh, look forward to working with you. Hopefully, we're here to address any of your questions, and I know that we'll give you our heart and soul if we're selected. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Let me thank all the persons who've been here today and even on the phone to, uh, make your presentations. Uh, we are, uh, very serious about what we need to do here. Uh, this is a, the county administrator in this county is growing. This county is, is, uh, gonna be a tedious job, specifically going through some of the things that we have to look at in the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Uh, so let me thank you all for, for being here and, uh, making the presentation. Uh, I want to open it up for questions at this point. After the questions, I'm gonna take the floor back and make a motion. Uh, so are there any questions at this particular point in time? Okay. I don't see anyone asking any questions. So at this point, I'm gonna pass the gavel to the vice chair. Uh, I had an opportunity, just like you all had, to review all of the information that was given to us by Mr. Stromper. Mr. Stromper, thank you very much, all of your hard work. You did an excellent, uh, and, uh, job in putting this together and, uh, letting us see exactly, uh, what you have out there. So, um, after reviewing, uh, all of the, uh, information on all of the applicants, uh, the firms, and again, I appreciate it, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that we hire Norlock and Associates to do our executive search, uh, and working with Mr. Stromper and this board, uh, to hire our next, uh, county administrator, and that's my motion to hire Norlock and Associates.
Uh, we have a motion by, um, Commissioner Miller, seconded by both Commissioner Kemp and Merman. Any discussion? Go for a vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. We'll get to work on it. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Merrill is, is not here, so we're gonna move into B one, which is the approval memo. Thank you. Sorry. Approve a memorandum of understanding between Hillsborough County, the city of Tampa, and the Tampa Innovation Alliance. Who's handling that here? Do we have a staff member that's gonna bring that forth? Uh, well, Mr. Sharp, you wanna come forth? And I thought we had a staff member, but we don't, but go ahead.
Be honored to. Mister Chairman, uh, commissioners, uh, we'll keep this very brief. And then Mr. Merrill is here, so.
I was gonna give you some room to talk. All right, yes, uh, item B one. Uh, as I mentioned at the outset, this is the memorandum of understanding between all the major parties, uh, county, city of Tampa, Innovation Alliance, South Florida, University of South Florida, UACDC, Moffett, and RD Management, and University Community Hospital. Uh, this is the memorandum of understanding that we, um, suggested be delivered to you at the presentation in October, uh, when we had a number of the stakeholders here and at city council, uh, presenting the vision for the Innovation District. And so, uh, this is, uh, the work of all the parties, uh, aligning all of their understandings of the importance of the work, their roles, responsibilities. And, um, so we are at a point where tomorrow, uh, this will be presented to Tampa City Council, and, uh, pending approval, we'll be ready to begin the hard work of putting together a business development plan, uh, which will address a number of the important aspects of building out a, uh, Innovation District, taking into account housing needs, recruitment needs, mobility needs. Uh, all of those are detailed in the, in the MOU. Also, the MOU, uh, recites some of the core principles that were discussed back in October, among which would be ensuring diversity, ensuring that, uh, folks who live there now are not displaced. Other, uh, key core values as well. The, the, uh, the work of the business development plan, we will expedite, but it will take some time. We're thinking at least six months, uh, a year at the outside, but hopefully, uh, closer to six months. The estimated cost is, uh, up to two million dollars. It could be less than that. There will be a three-way sharing of the cost, uh, a third each, county, city, and the private, uh, entities that make up the Innovation Alliance. And so, um, that will be the, uh, the funding source for the business development plan. We'll come back to, to commission and to city council periodically as we're doing it, to, uh, update you on where we are. And with that, um, Mark, did you want to say anything?
Just wanted to, um, Mister Chair, um, my name is Mark Sharp. Forgot. Director of the Tampa Innovation Partnership. Um, I'm here with our board chair, Mister Chris Bowen. I'm here with, uh, the chairman of the city council, Councilman Viera. We also have members, our advisory board chair, Mister Ing is here, as well as Mister Kemp, who is working with us on the development of the Opportunity Zone Fund Plan, which is a, will be a component of the business development plan. And then as well, Sarah Combs, who is the newest member of our executive board, voted on by our board members at the last board member, at the last, uh, executive board meeting of the partnership, and one of our key stakeholders and partners. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over now to our chairman, but I just wanted to reiterate. First, we want to thank staff for all the work that they've done. Mister Merrill personally for his engagement and personal attention to, uh, this project. It's never easy bringing together a coalition. And we have, uh, within our organization, our anchor members who have signed, our advisory members who, under the signature of our chairman, are part of this agreement, and our general members. We enshrined in this document, um, our commitment to this being of benefit to the community. The very first whereas talks about the societal benefits, to include housing, to, to jobs, to include addressing crime issues and, and poverty. And it closes when it talks about the stakeholders, that we are committed to engaging all of our stakeholders. There's eighty-seven thousand people who live within the district, but making sure that we engage the community and the neighborhoods. They're listed as our stakeholders, and when we get into the business of developing the business development plan, it talks again about making sure that we work with our stakeholders closely to make sure they're part of every element of this. We talk about the Community Benefits Agreement and making sure that we consider that as well as we move forward. But this is an effort, as Dr. Stephen Corral wrote in his book Organized Innovation, on page five, we're gonna lift up the entire community. It's historic. We're thrilled that we've got the county, our members, and the city together for the very first time to do something very special in the university area. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our chairman, uh, Mister Bowen.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, Chris Bowen, uh, uh, speaking here today on behalf of the Tampa Innovation, uh, Alliance and Partnership as, uh, executive board chair of that organization. This historic, uh, MOU launches a partnership with the community to develop the framework and action plan for a best-in-class innovation community district. Based within the Uptown District, this innovation community will influence and positively impact the way we in Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay region, uh, learn, play, work, and live. Uh, we have several people here in attendance this morning that, uh, would be available to answer any questions you may have, but, uh, we're, we're very, very excited about joining with you, partnering with you, and many other stakeholders to, uh, I think, take advantage of some very good timing, uh, in our medical district, our tech cluster, our major university research, uh, uh, campus and, and area. Uh, so, uh, again, uh, thank you for, uh, reviewing this and supporting us.
Thank you, sir. Mister Chairman of the city council, with all due respect, sir, do you have anything you would like to bring forth? Always respected.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I, I didn't necessarily come here to speak, but just wanted to, uh, just show my strong support of this endeavor and initiative. This is really, uh, the beginning or the preface of something really great in this area. As, uh, former Commissioner Sharp, who has done so much to bring this forward over the last several years, has said that this is the preface to something really great in this area, and this is the beginning to agree, to eventually come to an agreement. Uh, like I was telling somebody before, this is an agreement to come to the ten suggestions, and we're gonna turn those ten suggestions into ten commandments to grow this area. So thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Before I call in any, any members of, of the board here, let me, let me say this. I've been involved with this area since nineteen seventy, um, as a student at University of South Florida. When, uh, Fowler Avenue ended, the pavement ended at Thirty Street, and when you went to the campus, it was dirt road. Why? Because the mere fact is that that was a, a military area that they utilized, and it was just a lot of dirt and sand out there. Had opportunity to come back after serving the military and coming back to USF. What a lot of things have changed, but what also had changed is that the surrounding area, all of a sudden, did not exemplify what the new university was. The university was founded in nineteen seventy-five to six, uh, but the area around it didn't move forward like the university moved forward. And through the years, it just has not developed. And through the years, it just has not developed the way we thought and where it should have developed. As I told you, when I went to work at the University of South Florida back in 2007, we used to take eminent, prominent professors and didn't bring them down Fowler Avenue, Fletcher, we took them down I-4 and brought them in the back way through Temple Terrace so they couldn't see that blighted area. Now, we have an innovation area out there headed up by a guy who drinks too much coffee, Mark Sharp, and he's constantly, constantly with his board telling us what needs to happen out there and what we need to do. And this is the start, this is the kickoff for the game, to get those things started. And I hope that the good Lord keeps him around long enough to see this happen before he calls me to glory. So with that, with that being said, I think what we have now is to have some members to say a few words, but I just had to say that. I just had to say that because, well, I'll make the motion. If I make the motion to approve item B1, it's my pleasure to do that, and I just cannot wait to see what happens out there. And I'm not kidding that I hope that I'm around to see the finished product as we go forward. Commissioner Overman, that's my motion to approve item B1. Will everybody second it? Commissioner Overman, are you?
Yeah, if I've got this, I can't second, and I'm seconding.
Don't you care?
Okay, all right, great. You know, I, when I moved here in 1984 and got a chance to know the community, I too noticed that we had some discrepancies in how we had grown our community, and felt that it was critically important that we looked at this area, which had been an area where it was a landing zone for people that ended up being displaced. So what I am pleased to see in this MOU is a commitment to rebuilding the area, to addressing affordable housing challenges, to reaching out to the community. What's critically important in my mind is, in the governance language, the stakeholder outreach that needs, and the result of that outreach to all our communities in that surrounding area, to the neighborhood associations, to the people who have lived with the consequences of us not investing in that area for so long, to, so that they are insured an opportunity to celebrate in our investment in this area. And then have that, that component live and breathe within the development plan. What I also enjoy about this MOU is that we've set somewhat of a deadline of coming back with a business plan within a year. Our community and our efforts oftentimes go, oh yeah, we're going to do this, and then 10 years down the road, we're going, yep, we're going to do this, and we're not going to do this with this. And I'm glad to see that. I'm excited to see the components that are included in the plan, not only for businesses and communities, but the commitment to using complete communities as a way of bringing value to the table. Having transit as a component as a priority, having affordable housing as a priority, as well as workforce, having our communities and our community service organizations at the table, as well as the business owners committed to really rebuilding this area with a keen eye on fighting gentrification, is critically important. Gentrification isn't necessarily a bad thing if it helps people stay where they are. An eye on displacement is critical in this effort and endeavor. And with that, I am excited to see us move forward in this area. Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I am extremely excited, as everyone else is, about this opportunity for a community and area that's long needed, I think, a special sort of attention and investment. And so I'm very pleased to have, I know you've worked incredibly hard on it, Mark, not just coffee, but I don't know even what powers Mark sometimes, but, and Ms. Bowen, I thank you for, you know, I think you're looking really closely at how this should work out. Sarah Combs, what I'm so happy with what you've been doing in the university area, and I'm really anxious to see this moving forward. We obviously have an incredible opportunity here, we have a top-flight university. USF has grown, and it's also now no longer the commuter university it once was. We have all that student energy and power there. We also have an incredible medical complex, as we all know, the largest veterans hospital, as I understand, the busiest veterans hospital in America. It's really, and Moffett, and all the resources that we have here, so it's time for us, I think, for us to look at how we can capitalize, redevelop, and what the county can do to aid that and bring that on. And just in saying that, I hope, I want to make sure that we can uplift and do everything we can in that community to keep the investment in that community, but also to help those that live there now to have better opportunities and keep them in place, just building a better community there. So I'm looking anxiously at that. I have said earlier today too, and I'll say it again, I'm extremely excited, as Markwell knows, about the CSX tracks and even the CSX corridor that extends from Nebraska Avenue to Temple Terrace, just south of Fowler Avenue, and how that could be developed. Our heart, the MPO, and the regional TMA have all unanimously approved our efforts to move forward with the USF, with the CSX tracks, a way to connect USF to downtown, to Ebor. I mean, it's just an incredible opportunity that we have already in place. So I'm very excited about looking at that, and also about what we can do in terms of septic and wastewater water in the USF area that I think is badly needed infrastructure, that's kind of shocking, and we can't think about densifying and doing the things we need to do unless we address that in that community, as well as just simple, or seemingly more simple, things like sidewalk infrastructure and walkability. And as well, I'm very excited that FDOT has already invested in a walkway over Fowler Avenue, an elevated walkway that connects the Mozy area property to the university. Again, an incredible opportunity for us to build on if we have a transit system activated to that point. So I'm very, very excited. Thank you so much for all the work that's been done on this. I look forward to the future with this, as well as the whole Board, but it's a very exciting proposition.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no one else in the queue, we'll go for a vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say as well, sometimes staff doesn't get the credit they deserve, and I did want to thank Sam Hamilton as well. Sam really did a Herculean job of kind of corralling everyone and putting the agreement together. So to Sam and all the others, thank you for the hard work, and we appreciate it, we're not going to let you down.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Thank you, Sam. Mr. Merrill.
That takes you to your 10:45 time cert, item F2, Commissioner Hagan's item.
Commissioner Hagan, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before I introduce this item, I wanted to just take a moment and really brag on the good work, really great work of Film Tampa Bay, whether it's commercials, TV series, or film. The industry is exploding in Hillsborough County, and Film Tampa Bay, led by Tyler, really deserves a ton of credit. Just a couple of quick bullet points. There have been 231 productions, 11.8 million in economic impact for fiscal year 19, that's nearly double the economic impact from just last year. Since 2017, we've attracted over 1,200 total productions and have benefited from 46.3 million in local economic impact. And of all the Florida-based film commissions, Film Tampa Bay is the top marketer and has the strongest social media presence. So I wanted to give Tyler and Film Tampa Bay props on that. Regarding today's agenda item, we have an excellent opportunity to attract a prestige film with significant Academy Award-winning talent. Based on a true story, it was originally slated to film in Orlando, but because of our incentive, producers have been considering Tampa as a substitute filming location. However, without a sizable studio facility, which does not currently exist in Tampa Bay, we were only looking at potentially 40% of the filming needs. However, with today's agreement that allows access to Mozy, paves the way for the film to shoot entirely here. Nothing like The Sun has an estimated economic impact of over 1 million. In addition, the script has been altered to represent Tampa and not Orlando as the featured location. With respect to Mozy, currently, the Mozy West Building is vacant since Mozy relocated to the former Kids in Charge Building. Usage has been the storage of emergency management supplies for shelters in case of an event. The term is for 90 days, beginning January 2nd. There are options for two 30-day renewals with the same terms. And with that, I'm very pleased to move approval of this item.
That's a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Overman to approve item F2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
And that takes us to your 11:00 AM time cert, G2.
Good morning, sir.
Deputy County Administrator Greg Horde, I'm also joined at the podium by Deputy Chief Jason Doherty and Union Local 2294 Treasurer Chris Bowles. Thank you for your time this morning, delighted to come back to you and update you on the work that we did, really about a year and a half worth of work to evaluate what's going on with the leadership and communication in Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. It's been, I think, a very good effort. You were provided all of the detail that was provided to the firefighters, and I'm happy to say that we spent a lot of time, it's very hard sometimes to engage in difficult reflection, but I think we spent a lot of time, and I'm very comfortable that this effort has been forward-looking, and that we've engaged in a very honest and substantive discussion with the fire union, as well as fire administration. This difficult conversation has led to a number of improvements over the past several months. I know that with the work that the administration and the union have done, we're very comfortable with the process going forward. I have every confidence that this process will lead to better service for our residents and for the businesses and visitors who come to Hillsborough County. Excuse me. So before I offer an opportunity for Fire Rescue and the union to make a couple of comments, I do want to thank very sincerely the fire union, including Fire Union President Derek Ryan, he's supported this effort. Fire Chief Dennis Jones has supported this effort and has been very engaged along with his management staff. I also want to make sure I thank County Administrator Mike Merrill, who supported the effort. Once we learned of some of the issues in the Fire Rescue Department, we wanted to really take a deep dive, and I'm very thankful for his support and the work that the steering committee did on this effort. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the steering committee. Those members are Chris Bowles, Jason Doherty, Steve Bogle, Ray Hughes, Ivy Martin, Ken Forward, and Robert Collins, and I would ask them to please stand if they're in attendance today, so that we can, you can put a face to the folks who have actually worked quite a bit on this effort. Thank you all. They spent a number of months developing the recommendations that you have in your packet. We have an action plan that deals with the very substantive issues that were raised, leadership and communication, workforce training, and the work climate, including health and safety. So I don't want to spend a whole lot of time going over all of the detail, you have that, we're happy to answer any questions, but I do want to afford an opportunity for the steering committee members who are joining me to make a few remarks.
Sure. Morning.
Good morning. Jason Doherty for the record on the Deputy Chief of Operations, and I want to take a minute to first thank all the county commissioners for their continued support. Also want to thank our county administration, Mr. Merrill, Mr. Horde, and our HR Director Ivy Martin for their faith and leadership throughout this process. Also want to thank our Fire Chief, Chief Jones, for his vision and leadership, and our union leadership, President Derek Ryan and his team for supporting and working together on this initiative. Lastly, as Mr. Horde stated, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the steering committee and Me and Talent Solutions for their relentless work and effort throughout this analysis. Before I finish the rest of my statement, I want to take advantage of speaking to you for a second and speak from the heart, and kind of explain to you what this process was. So part of doing that is explaining who I am. I'm a very passionate individual, and I, with my passion, I believe in teamwork, I believe that the team always accomplishes more than the individual, and I always believe in furthering yourself and furthering your education. I learned that from my father. He was a high school teacher and coached for 35 years, served in the Marine Corps, and he passed that down to me. And why I say that's important, when this, this analysis was forged ahead by Mr. Horde, Chief Jones immediately pulled me in the office and recognized those same things that my father instilled in me, and told me, listen, I need your passion, I need your dedication to the team, and I need you to lead, to help lead this committee, steering committee, and get this department together, working as a team. He also said he wanted me to do what I could to further educate myself. I didn't know that meant go back to school and get your masters in organizational leadership, which I did, and specialize in fire administration, and did a thesis on labor management relations. I say that I didn't do that for myself, I did that for this department. And there's two things I learned going through that, and those two things were you have to have a strong foundation in order to grow, and you also have to have a leadership that trusts and believes in each other. I say that because our Fire Chief has a trust and belief in this department, and I also say that because our union president, Derek Ryan, has a trust and belief in this department. In the words of Douglas McArthur, "They both had the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to others." That's a hard thing to do when we set out with this. They had to step aside and allow a team to come together to figure out how we're going to move forward. And I'm humbled by both of them and their ability to do that, considering Fire Chief's been doing this for 40-plus years, and Derek Ryan's been doing it for 30-plus years as a leadership in the union. I also say a strong foundation, there's no doubt we have that. We have that based on three things, our love for one another, our love for our community and the citizens we serve, and our love for Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. So with that said, I'll finish the rest of my statement quickly. Mr. Horde spearheaded this initiative with Me and Talent Solutions to bring labor and management together. The B.O.C.C., county administration, fire department senior staff, and union leadership have all continuously motivated all parties to remain committed to strengthening our resolve to one another. Our department strives for perfection while understanding there's always room for improvement. We will continue to do this by being transparent while using self-reflection to meet our goals collectively. I can speak for our entire team when I say we learned a tremendous amount through this journey. The most significant lessons learned is we do not have problems, but rather opportunities. We are moving forward collaboratively and remain focused and understand the investment each member of our department has with the community. Commissioner Miller, our vision and mission is to continuously serve our citizens with duty, honor, and courage, and I know that was important to you. This exercise has proven that we can be innovative and creative in providing recommendations and solutions to challenges that are presented. We have proven this as a department by addressing numerous areas over the past year that has led to the strengthening of relationships. We are becoming united and galvanized as we propel towards the future. I will leave you with this, we are better today than we were yesterday, and will be better tomorrow than we were today. As Henry Ford said, "Coming together is the beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is success." I can assure you we are taxing success each and every day. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
I should have gone first. I have to echo everything Chief Doherty's saying.
Get closer to my.
I'm sorry. For those of you who know me, Chris Bowles, I've been treasurer, I'm the treasurer of the local, I'm a captain in the department, been serving for the last 24 years. Very passionate about our people, about what I do, what we do. Mr. Merrill, you probably know that, and for those of you commissioners, you know me. And I, I think that this whole process has given us a really unique perspective on how we can make things better for not only the well-being of our employees, but for the citizens that we serve every single day. We give excellent service, each one of you know that, but we're going to give even better service. And this. to give even better service. And this process is affording us that opportunity to kind of look inside and see where we can do that. And I think if you probably asked Dr. Mian, who has done a few of these different type of things with departments around the state, that we're actually taking it three levels more than where he even expected it to go. And they've really allowed us an opportunity to make really positive changes and maybe be not behind the wave, but on the crest of the wave, and make changes that other departments can follow and kind of set maybe a model up for other people in other departments to do the same thing. I don't have many quotes to say, other than I do appreciate every one of you and your support, Commissioner Miller, Mike Merrill, for everything you guys have done. Listening, I think that was important, and giving us the opportunity to truly move forward and make changes and, you know, think about what's going on there with one of your largest departments. And I also would like to thank Chief Jones and Derek Ryan, who have been, you know, not at all times, no one's ever on the same page. My family gets together, you know, there's three of them going this way, there's three of them going that way. But we can all get together and find a solution to our problems. And I think that's where we are. And again, we greatly appreciate that. And this committee and the subcommittees that have formed are really going to do some really good things. And I think that you all will see that as time goes on. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Let me thank, I'm sorry, you have some more?
So, just in conclusion, would like to ask you to receive the report. I think, as you can tell, we have spent a significant amount of time. We've had a lot of interaction with the union and the administration and county administration. Dr. Michael Mian has done a fantastic job, in my opinion, of helping meld together an action plan. And we are committed to that. Over the next 18 months, you will see the fruits of that. We've already engaged in a number of activities that improve the workforce climate in Fire Rescue, and we're dedicated to making sure that continues. So, very thankful for the work and dedication that all the Steering Committee members and everyone who participated in the survey and the work that's been done thus far. Very thankful for that. Looking forward to the new year and continuing to implement that. Thank you.
The motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to receive the report. Let me say thank you to all of you, the committee, in getting together and putting this together with Mr. Merrill and Mr. Horwiddell and all of you for working this out. I mean, let me ask Chief Jones and Mr. Ryan to come forth. No fault, Chief. I'm excited. On behalf of this board, let me thank the two of you for working to bring about Dr. Mian to lead the charge in putting together this particular information and working relationship to have us a better rescue, Fire Rescue Department within Hillsborough County. I know it was difficult at times. There's no doubt about that. But you came together and put aside your differences and decided that it was best for the 1.5 million people of this county for you all to get together, work out whatever had to be worked out, and got it done. You lead these two organizations. That's why I asked both of you to come forward. So, on behalf of this board, and Mr. Merrill and Mr. Horwiddell, we want to thank you for what you've done. We're going to have a better Fire Rescue Department within Hillsborough County, and that's the most important thing. Dr. Mian, thank you so very, very much. One thing I learned is that you may not agree when you, as a first responder, with firemen and police officers, and I know this because my son's a police officer, but you don't mess with anyone else, because you get yourself in deep trouble. So, you all may have had differences, and I think you've ironed those differences out now, and you're working on behalf of a better county. And we want to thank you very much for that. So, thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I also want to especially thank Derek and Chris and his team and the chief. This was a monumental effort, and I respect what you've done, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Mian, thank you, sir, for all the work you've put forth in this, okay? Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to receive the reports. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
That takes you to your 11:15 time, certain, which is continued board discussion to consider rescheduling November 10th land use meeting? Yeah, we're okay. It's almost 11:15.
Anyone have a list? Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. We continued this because I had raised this prior meeting, and two of the commissioners had left at the time. I had asked that we reschedule the meeting that occurs between, I, by the way, presented this at the beginning of this year as a regular policy. I don't believe that we should have a land use meeting after the election but before new commissioners are sworn in. It's only about a week, while land use decisions are irreversible. This is not personal. It's not meant, directed at any commissioners here on the board or in any way. I think this is really about good government and accountability and the perception of the public. Moving the land use meeting to a week earlier at the end of October, October 27th, as Commissioner Overman suggested, I believe, is a good fix. I had had some other ideas, maybe about keeping it at that same time and just doing items on consent so we could move things along. But I think October 27th, it's, I think, a very reasonable and good way to move forward. And again, I think this is about good government and perceptions as much as anything else. So, I'd like to, I'll make a motion to move the land use meeting, actually, originally Commissioner Overman's motion, but to move it to October 27th prior to the November elections.
As motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Overman to move the meeting, I'm going to ask you to vote no on this. There is no reason whatsoever for us moving a land use meeting because of the mere fact that you want to have it after the elections, saying that there could be some whatever done. As I said before, the charter of this county and the statutes of the state of Florida says that we, as county commissioners, whether we're termed out, our term does not end until midnight on the third Monday before the third Tuesday. We have a responsibility until that time. We have a job to do, according to the charter and the statute of the state of Florida, and we should carry that forth. Moving this has no reason, I can't, there's no reason to even move it because of the mere fact that someone's thinking that there could be a vote taken because it's land use decisions or whatever the case may be. They're forever. They're not forever. The fact of the matter is, is that we, as county commissioners, have a job to do. And it's not, it's not proper for us to say we're moving a meeting because the mere fact is that we want to wait till new members come in. If that's the case, then we should not have county commission meetings at all, have any meetings after the elections. Let's just say we're not going to meet at all. Taxpayers pay us your money, and we're just going to sit back and do absolutely nothing. So, I'm going to ask that you please do not support this motion. This is a wrong step to take. This is a wrong message to be sent into the public. It's setting a precedent that I think that's going to backfire on us. It's just wrong. So, I'm going to ask you not to support this motion. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Commissioner Miller, I appreciate your concerns about that, that perception that our commission won't be working after an election, in the same ethic and the same passion that they did, that got them in that job and got them in that role. However, the only reason I would recommend, when it comes to land use, this consideration is, as an individual who was technically elected and unable to make my voice heard, other than to show up in public comment, it is, and because there is a little more permanence with land use than there is on many of our B.O.C.C. agenda items. I remember sitting and listening to the particular land use meeting, and it's not to suggest that there was any lack of ethic or passion or responsibility on the board's part on their decision. But unfortunately, politics is politics, and the press is the press. And it is critically important that we create an opportunity for our citizens to wholly trust in the work that we do. And unfortunately, that doesn't always the outcome when there is a contentious issue that could come forward on a land use meeting in that two-week period that might cause a problem with incoming and/or outgoing leaders of our community. It's literally a couple of weeks. And the good news is, October's a long month. You know, it does oftentimes give us an opportunity to have a land use meeting in order to not disrupt our business owners that are looking to invest in our community in a good way, and giving them the opportunity to continue doing business that they needed to have done as we move into the last quarter of a year, or the first quarter of our budgetary year. So, while I truly appreciate that this may be perceived as being a lack of confidence in those that serve and have an elected position that may be either ending or beginning, I think it's important that we recognize that there is an opportunity to eliminate the suspicions of the press or our citizens, should that be an issue that should raise its head during an agenda item.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And Commissioner Miller, I appreciate your thoughts, and I consider them carefully. I do think that Commissioner Overman proposed the perfect solution to satisfy everyone by moving this meeting up two weeks. I agree with this from a policy perspective, for the reasons I've stated before. Land use decisions are forever. They cannot be rescinded or revisited by an incoming board, like almost all the other issues that we decide at a regular meeting on a regular agenda. If a land use hearing is held right after an election, there are times where it can allow a commissioner to vote on a matter without being accountable to the voters. Once the election is over, their vote can't be brought up in discussions with the voters. So, Commissioner White recently noted that when we make land use decisions here, if the voters don't like our decisions, they can vote us out. But in this one lame duck session, that does not apply to those commissioners who have already been voted out. So, for me, this is a policy issue. It's got nothing to do with whoever happens to be in office at the time. I think it's good government for when it's my turn to be voted out of office. It's, and this is actually, well, it's different. It doesn't apply to commissioners being termed out. So, it's actually the perfect time for us to be implementing this change because it doesn't apply to the vote of any board members except Commissioner Kemp. And she's the one calling for the change. Those commissioners who are termed out of their seats are sadly going to be gone, no matter how they vote, on any matters for the rest of their term. So, as far as the accountability to the voters is concerned, it would make no difference whether that vote is held in October or November to commissioners being termed out. Only matters to commissioners who are being, who are voted out and still casting a vote on land use issues after they've been voted out. That ones facing term limits, their vote will be the same, carry the same weight in October as November. So, I think it's a perfect time to do this policy change that I agree with. The only one it applies to is Commissioner Kemp. She's bringing it forward. So, I will be supporting it.
Mr. Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As being someone who is also in your shoes, I find this item disheartening, actually. And as I said at the last meeting, disrespectful to you and I. I think that we have every right to make our votes count until the last day. Every single right. And lame duck, I don't know whoever came up with that term, because ducks really aren't lame. If you've ever watched a duck, they're calm on the top, but they're like doing this, you know, underneath the water. So, they're not really lame by any sense. But I don't consider any, I don't consider it to be a lame duck at any point, even up until the last minute of midnight. I think if there is an item on the agenda that people think needs to be moved, you can always move to defer an item. You can move to continue an item to a next agenda. And I think to stop the regular business of our land use, listen, here's what's going to happen. All the people that would be on the agenda, they're going to fight real hard to get on the October land use agenda. So, whether we move it up, move it back, keep it the same, whatever, I mean, they're, everyone's trying to get their items on that October land use agenda. So, this is, actually, I consider it kind of silly. I think the comments that have been, I do take it personal. And I think that we should be respectful of each other and understand that these votes count until the last minute at midnight. And no less, obviously, no more. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Mr. White, you recognize?
Thank you. I just felt compelled to speak, you know, just to say to Commissioners Overman, Smith, and Kemp that I can certainly understand the sentiment behind this and where you're heading with it. But I'm going to be voting along Commissioner Miller's lines for a host of reasons. One is, you know, we could find any number of reasons that these meetings might have to be moved around. I'm hesitant to start tinkering with the calendar on a microscopic level like that. You know, land use is on that set rotation of second Tuesday of each month. Sometimes it's moved around because of a holiday, but that's, you know, that's ironed out well ahead of time and comes to the board, recommended as such. Moving it back a couple of weeks, special interests will still find some way to game the system if they want to. And I'll just, as a final thought, just say that, you know, an elected official has had four years running up to the election date to establish a record that the people are going to vote on. And not everything is necessarily going to hinge on one vote at a land use meeting. So, I'm hesitant to change the calendar with really almost a stated purpose of giving folks the opportunity to take information on a vote out onto the campaign trail. So, again, I fully understand the sentiment. I understand the feelings behind it. But from a policy perspective, I agree with Commissioner Miller.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, I'm sorry, motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Overman on item B2. Please record your vote.
Motion failed, three to four. Commissioners Hagan, Miller, Merman, and White voted no.
Merrill.
Takes you to your last time, certain E1, 11:30, which is a special appearance by Craig Richard.
Mr. Richards.
For his semi-annual activity report.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to be with you all today. I have the pleasure of presenting the last two quarters of our fiscal year, and I think I have some pretty good news to share with you. First is, in terms of jobs announced, you may recall in the first quarter of last year, we acknowledged that the 2,500 job goal was going to be pretty tough, given all the downgrades in the state's economic development programs and stuff. We thought that it was going to be a pretty uphill climb. But fortunately, I'm proud to announce that we achieved 100% of our job goal. So, we're really pleased about that. We absolutely crushed the capital investment goal, 391% of our capital investment goal, and 122% of our projects goal, meaning we closed In terms of new projects opened, 185% of that goal, and projects, if I could, just basically define that as the types of companies that are considering recruiting and expanding in Hillsborough County. So we're really pleased that, you know, in addition to the number of jobs that we've announced, that we have a good, healthy pipeline of jobs that are, or companies that are looking to locate or expand in Hillsborough County. And this last goal is the number of leads, and the reason why we put this in here is because, as I acknowledged before, the state is having a very difficult time in maintaining the momentum and lead generation. So it's incumbent upon us to actually generate more leads as a result of that in order to keep up the same volume that we've had. And I'm pleased to report that we achieved 150% of that annual goal. So all in all, we're looking good on the jobs front. Just to give you a few highlights of the past two quarters, the following companies are just a sampling of the 39 companies that we announced this past year. And what I want to bring your attention to is you'll see that there are two information technology companies, a distribution company, and a manufacturing company. One IT company is not one that you would readily identify in terms of IT company, Pinsky. Pinsky is a company that, you know, most people know for rental cars and cars and big trucks and things like that, but in every one of these cases, and this is an example of really some, what our economy is made of, you know, we have a lot of different companies in the financial services sector and manufacturing sector, but a lot of the jobs that are being produced in these sectors are actually technology jobs. Pinsky is an example of that. And I also want to put a little footnote by Pinsky for later in the presentation. I have another story to tell about them. And then, of course, we have a nice manufacturing announcement with 135 new jobs with average wages of $70,000. That's a very good project. Now, a lot of times, you'll hear about the big companies that have relocated here. The companies are in the newspapers for, you know, choosing Tampa or Hillsborough County as their location, but what you don't hear about are the small businesses that are growing here every day. So I wanted to take an opportunity to highlight one of our small businesses. This is a small minority-owned business. It's an engineering company, Voltair, who decided to expand its location in Tampa. So this is a corporate headquarters retained that's only going to create 10 new jobs, but it's 30 existing jobs and $330,000 in capital investment. This is an important type of project simply because it demonstrates that companies of all sizes can thrive right here in Hillsborough County. And we were fortunate to be able to work with Julius Davis and his team in locating a site where they can expand and grow their company. I want to give a big shout out to Commissioner Kemp for coming with us to this groundbreaking. CAE is a training and simulation company that decided to expand their headquarters here, and they're locating adjacent to the airport. The groundbreaking included Governor Ron DeSantis, U.S. Representative Kathy Castor, and of course, our own Commissioner Kemp. And this project represents 500 current employees and 100 new jobs. This is an outstanding project, because this company has its roots here in Hillsborough County, 40-year history. So we're really pleased about that particular project. In this slide, I want to bring your attention to the very first column, which is the manufacturing column. What you'll notice is that of all of the industry sectors that we have here, this is a chart of all the various projects, or leads, if you will, in our current pipeline by industry sector. So if you look at the very first column, which is manufacturing, you'll see that manufacturing outweighs all of the other industry sectors that we have in our project pipeline. That is a good thing, because as we mentioned before, typically, manufacturing projects have strong capital investment and good wages. And capital investment, of course, is what builds our tax base, and I think you would all be pleased to know that. To tell us a little bit more about the manufacturing industry in Hillsborough County, I'm going to turn it over to our own Commissioner Ken Hagan. Have a little video from Ken to talk about manufacturing.
One of the most exciting business success stories of the past decade in Hillsborough County is the growth of our manufacturing sector. From 2009 to 2018, manufacturing employment rose by more than 13%, and average annual wages went up 25%. Hillsborough County's 1,100-plus manufacturers employ over 28,000 local residents in diverse fields such as building materials, aviation, medical devices, boating, and beer. The Tampa-Hillsborough EDC and Hillsborough County have been working together to support the growth of these exciting local companies and recruit new ones to our market. International manufacturing giants such as James Hardy and CAE have solid roots planted in our community and continue to thrive here. Newcomers like Bircham Yachts and Advanced Airfoil Components are providing local families with innovative, high-wage jobs and state-of-the-art facilities. And homegrown businesses like Tampa Bay Brewing Company and Aero Simulation are expanding thanks to our pro-business environment and the availability of plenty of skilled talent. These great jobs won't stay here forever if we don't have the workers to fill them. That's why we created the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County. Through this initiative, we stay on top of the needs of our local manufacturers and develop programs that will supply them with a workforce with the skills they require. Plant City's Career Academy, Hillsborough County Schools' Machining Technology and Robotics Programs, and HCC's Applied Welding Programs are helping our youth find dynamic manufacturing career paths that don't require a college degree. These young people find that good-paying jobs with full benefits are waiting for them when they graduate. Given the success of our local manufacturers and the programs we have in place to train new workers, the future of this industry looks bright. And Hillsborough County and the EDC will be there to support them every step of the way.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for helping us with that. Tells a great story about manufacturing here in the county. Some of the business development events that we had an opportunity to attend this past two quarters include two Team Florida events, one in Atlanta, one in New York. We had two business development missions, one in Chicago and one in Amsterdam. And as I mentioned before, when I mentioned the Pinsky Project, well, if you look at the two items, it has IAMC, there's an IAMC Spring Forum, and there's an IAMC Fall Forum. You may recall about two years ago, we hosted a Fall, IAMC Fall Forum here in Tampa. And from that, hosting that conference, that's where we got the Pinsky Lead. So it shows you that these things pay off, and so we're really proud of that particular announcement, and that's the reason why we attend a lot of these events and hopefully host some of these events to get those types of leads. Also, in regards to our Make It Tampa Bay partnership with Visit Tampa Bay, I just want to remind you that this whole Make It Tampa Bay campaign was a brainchild of your very own economic development staff, Ron Barton and Lindsay Kimble, who actually conceived of it. We've in turn been working real closely with Make It, with Visit Tampa Bay on this particular program. Our role in this is to promote it and facilitate it. And one of the things that we were able to do this past quarter was to, we hosted an event for HR executives. It's no good to have all these great tools and no one knows about it. So we hosted an event where over 30 employers attended, and the purpose of it was for those attendees to learn about what Make It Tampa Bay has to offer, how it can assist them, the types of tools that it has on the website, like Cost of Living Calculator, a Job Board, and a Hot Job of the Day. So this is just another example of our partnership and our collaboration with both the county and Visit Tampa Bay. Speaking of collaborations, Global Tampa Bay is a collaboration between Pinellas County and Pasco County. And this past two quarters, we went to Brazil. We brought seven companies with us. Those seven companies in turn generated $2.8 million in sales for their exports, their products and services. We got some pretty good news coverage out of it as well. And then we also had a little small SEAL team of professionals that went to France on a foreign direct investment mission. And during that mission, we met with over 20 companies in the fintech and manufacturing sectors. This is a smattering of some of the media coverage that we've received over the past two quarters. Financial Times, as you well know, is an international publication, and we were able to generate a five-page spread in an international newspaper. And this spread is about both Tampa and St. Petersburg in terms of their revitalization efforts. We also received some media, national media coverage in the Chief Executive Magazine. There's a regional report that they produce, and we were featured in that particular national magazine. And then, of course, we have two local media placements, both, one with Bay News 9 and one with Fox 13. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about Opportunity Tampa Bay. And Opportunity Tampa Bay is our strategic plan that the county actually helped us fund. And this particular strategic plan focuses on three primary areas. Of course, business development, which is what everyone knows us for. It also talks about talent attraction, which is what Make It Tampa Bay is about. How do we grow and expand that particular program? And then the third piece is placemaking, and this is a new area for us, because in this area, we talk about what it is that the EDC can do to help promote local communities, redevelopment areas or opportunity zones. What's our role in promoting some of these opportunities in some of these economically distressed communities? Also in the strategic plan, we look at our industry sectors, and we identify some niche opportunities within our industry sector. Cybersecurity, fintech, health tech, cancer solutions, logistics and technology information, were some of the five niche areas that we decided that there's some opportunities for us here in Hillsborough County that we can drill down on and be more competitive in. So with that, that concludes my update to you, Commissioners. I want to thank you again for your support, your leadership. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Richards, I don't see anyone at the, now I do. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. This is a great presentation, and congratulations on all the success you've been having and attracting the star power of Commissioner Hagan as your spokesperson. That's a really good job and very exciting. It's important to see our business climate diversified among different kinds of businesses for when one or the other goes through any cyclic issues. We have other legs of the stool helping our economy here. You know, one thing I just want to mention to the board is that, you know, there's been some controversy over the renaming of this organization from Tampa-Hillsborough EDC to the Tampa Bay EDC. And I feel strongly that when Hillsborough County is funding an organization, we deserve to have our name on it. And I just want to express I disagree with the current push to rebrand Hillsborough organizations without the county name, using only one city's name as if there's greater cachet in the name of Tampa Bay than Hillsborough. I think if we keep removing Hillsborough from entities which our taxpayers fund, it takes away from our brand. It erodes our brand the less Hillsborough is out there. The only way to strengthen our brand is to keep our name front and center on those things that we fund. And also, when things like our EDC are named for Tampa Bay rather than Hillsborough, it gives the impression to businesses and people outside the city to think that this is a city-centric entity that's not so interested in other parts of the county, like Riverview, for example, or Brandon. And I know that's not at all what your mission or intent is, but I'm just saying, having come from the field of marketing and logo design and branding, to consider that I think in all these entities, we need to consider the strength of the brand of Hillsborough for those things that Hillsborough County funds. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize? Movie Star.
I don't know about that, but I just want to say, Craig, outstanding work. Keep up the great job. And also, I thought that, I commend you for having the first-ever EDC overnight retreat. I thought that was extremely productive.
Thank you.
And it was not taxpayer-financed, I want to point that out. But it was a great retreat, and it was very productive. And just keep up the great work.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Richards, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your presentation. We appreciate all that you do, and hope that you have a great holiday. And ladies and gentlemen, I want to let you know, it couldn't have been done better by my fraternity brother, member Cap Alpha.
That's right. That's right. Thank you. And I'd like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and happy holidays to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merman?
We have two items left that concluded our time certans. We have G1 and G3. G1 is a report on the Kenan Street-Manfield Boulevard road construction.
Jim Hudok, Capital Programs Department. Commissioners, I'm here to provide an update on the board's request for staff to coordinate with Pasco County officials to construct the Kenan Street and Mansfield Boulevard roadway connection for pedestrian and bicycle traffic, and also for emergency vehicle access. As an update on progress to date, staff has met with Pasco County, the city of Tampa, and other project stakeholders regarding the proposed connection. We've reviewed the proposed plans for the connection and are currently working on a proposed concept plan for the roadway connection that will allow for the desired access for bicycle, pedestrian, and emergency vehicles. Moving forward, staff will meet with Pasco County and the city of Tampa, including the three jurisdictions' fire, rescue, and law enforcement stakeholders to develop the final plans for this connection. We will also bring an inter-local agreement, draft an inter-local agreement back to the board for approval that will define the construction and maintenance responsibilities. We're hopeful that the design and construction and everything, all the work necessary for this connection, can be completed within the next six months, assuming all the jurisdictions, you know, take care of the things that need to do. That's all I have for you today. Be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to receive the report. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. This is an item that I've worked on for about 13 years, back when I lived off of Kenan. It's not a, what we have in front of us is certainly not a full and complete access that is so desperately needed, but it is a good start after about 12 or 13 years of inaction. Our backup states that anticipated the project can be completed in six months. I would just encourage our staff to keep fighting the good fight, and I know you guys have done a great job up to now, but do everything you can to try and expedite that quicker if you can, because I know it's so badly needed, and the citizens up there certainly want it. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to receive the report. See to further discussion. Please record your vote.
Question carried, five to zero.
And final item is the scorecard presentations from Veteran Services, Development Services, and Economic Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky with Management and Budget. This is a continuation of our series of presenting department scorecards. We appreciate your warm reception of this effort and your input. Today, we have Development Services, Consumer and Veteran Affairs, and Economic Development. First up, Mr. Gormly.
Adam Gormley, Director of the Development Services Department. Thank you for the opportunity today to present the Development Services scorecard to you. We'll start with an overview of the department, and what we do is foster and preserve the public health, safety, and comfort and welfare through the regulation of land development activities in Hillsborough County. Our department is charged with primarily enforcing and administering the Hillsborough County Land Development Code and the attendant policy and technical manuals that accompany that code. We are in charge of the administration of the permitting process and zoning process from entitlements being... from entitlements being granted on a piece of land up through the construction of a building on that property. Uh, we do that through, uh, three, uh, service divisions and one, uh, customer service division. We have the Community Development, uh, Division, also known as the Zoning Division. Uh, that, that group is charged with, uh, administering the, uh, public hearing items and entitlement process. We have the Development Review Division, uh, which is in charge of, which is charged with primarily, um, the permitting of the horizontal elements of development, the layouts of roads and the subdivisions, and, uh, stormwater permitting and natural resources. And our third division is the Building and Construction Services Division. This division is in charge with enforcing the Florida Building Code. Uh, if something is going to be built, it, we, we regulate that, that use to make sure it's a safe and, um, and, and inhabitable structure. Uh, our last, uh, division is our, is the Center for Development Services. Uh, this is a customer service, uh, oriented group. It is a one-stop shop for permitting applications and is also in charge of the, uh, business operations within, within the department. Our value to Hillsborough County, we, our work touches, uh, all five of the county values. Uh, for strong and sustainable local economy, uh, we do promote commerce by issuing, uh, issuance of over three thousand commercial building permits in fiscal year nineteen. Uh, this is, uh, part of our total, uh, over sixty thousand building permits that we've issued. Um, and we oversaw, uh, uh, commercial site development, uh, project growth that grew fifteen percent from FY eighteen to FY nineteen. Uh, these are important functions as the, as the, the commerce and the building and construction, uh, helps our, our economy, uh, keep going. People are buying materials, people are being paid, and, uh, jobs are being created. For enhancement of public safety, uh, we ensure that, uh, people are living and working and playing in safe buildings, and we do that through, uh, our inspection of, uh, construction work. And, uh, last year we did over three hundred thirty thousand inspections, and, uh, I think I'm quite proud of, uh, we, we were able to get our, uh, rollover rate for building inspections at the end of the year down to zero percent, which means that of all the inspections that are called in a day, we're able to complete them all in that same day. We handled thirty-four hundred, uh, cut, uh, service requests. A lot of times these are requests that lead to, uh, ins- inspections or some identification of a problem in, in a neighborhood, be it a flooding situation or some unpermitted land alteration or tree removal. And, uh, we also processed over fourteen hundred new, uh, contractor license registrations. So these are people who are, who are qualified to hold themselves out to the public to, to contract for, uh, building construction work. Uh, and the life enrichment and recreational, uh, opportunities are, uh, we have a natural resources code enforcement team. Uh, they, uh, processed, uh, over five hundred cases in FY nineteen. Uh, and these are instances where somebody, uh, would have removed trees or other vegetation or, or affected the topography of the land without going through the, our, our permitting process. And, uh, we have very dedicated people who are looking out for, for, uh, natural environment and diligently pursue those issues. Uh, we've also succeeded in getting over eighty percent of our rezoning cases heard on the, uh, consent agenda. And what that means for, for, uh, us and, and, and the board is that we have successfully worked through outstanding issues that either we as staff or the public has had with rezoning applications. We think there's a lot of value to that in being able to, to narrow issues or ideally resolve them before it comes before this board. For self-sufficient individuals and families, we have, uh, through our Center for Development Services, had over eighty-two thousand interactions and over one-point-one million, uh, visits to our webpage. And we also announced, uh, launched Center Pass, which I'll get to a little bit more in the presentation. Uh, this is a new service that will allow ser, uh, clients to schedule appointments and get in the queue for services, uh, remotely without having to come down to, um, County Center and wait in line. Finally, under high-quality community assets, uh, we processed and, and, and reviewed five hundred and two subdivision applications. And as part of these applications, we'd be looking at the design of the community, how it's connected, how transportation is, is provided, how people can move, how the stormwater will, uh, be contained and appropriately treated, and, and, uh, the enhancement of natural resources, um, that come with the building of that subdivision. Finally, we, uh, oversaw, mentioned, uh, the issuance of over six, sixty thousand building permits that included over three thousand commercial and residential permits adding to our community. For, uh, success stories, uh, we did launch this year, uh, Center Pass, which is something that we're very excited about. I think it will make a big difference to our customers. Customers who come to the Center for Development Services for, uh, permitting activity, counseling, questions, uh, generally will, will come and get a ticket for service, and they'll, they'll wait in line until their number is called and, um, um, and, and what the Center Pass does is allows somebody to, uh, request that ticket remotely. It's good for up to two hours, so if somebody, uh, wants to, uh, schedule an appointment but not spend the time waiting, the, the wait times are shown on the website, um, that person can get that pass and come in at their own, uh, at their own time, uh, consistent with the estimated time that, that we provide. Uh, it also allows them to, uh, uh, schedule appointments remote, uh, for a later date, also online. Another action we took is we created the Land Use Customer Engagement Team, and the purpose of this team, this has been an evolution of our Hearing Operations Team, which previously had been, um, charged with preparing documents and, and materials for public hearings and the board's land use meeting. We've also now engaged that team to be more communicative with, uh, with customers and, and with citizens who request information on, uh, on, on cases of zoning process. Uh, we do have, uh, staff who provide, have developed and are sending a standardized response to, to applicants, advising them how to participate in the, uh, public hearing processes and where they're able to identify and find, uh, relevant permitting documents. Uh, we think this is a, is a great, uh, evolution for the team and understand that that's something the board is, is interested in furthering, and, and we're prepared to, to continue that trajectory with this team. Third success is, um, something that, it was a law passed this year, uh, that, that, that changed the, um, ability to require permits for removal of, uh, dangerous, uh, trees, trees opposed to danger to, uh, people or to property. Uh, believe that this was done to, to, uh, reduce, uh, bureaucracy and permitting, uh, hoops to jump through when we have a truly dangerous tree. And what the law, uh, allowed was allowed that, that those dangerous trees, certified by an arborist, to be removed without, uh, county permission or permit or, or process. Uh, it, it, it was something that, um, I think was a, was a sensible, uh, objective to, to hasten the removal of trees that are posing dangers. Uh, but there was some, um, uncertainty of how that would be administered and how we would be able to, to, um, you know, appropriately enforce that law and, and distinguish, uh, dangerous trees from other tree removal. And so what we have done is we reached out to the, uh, arborist communities and, uh, participated in an online forum and ultimately developed what we think is a really good tool to help homeowners and, and arborists. Uh, and it's a certification form. Uh, it's not something that's required, but it does allow, uh, a way to memorialize, uh, that a tree is dangerous, and we have that information, and it, it obviates the need to investigate a tree removal if, if we don't know, uh, that, that it was occurring because it was dangerous. Finally, the last, uh, success story I wanted to speak to was our, uh, I'm calling our Building Services two-point-oh. This was a reorganization of our Building and Construction Division, uh, reclassed most of the employees in that division. Uh, the, the purpose of that was to provide greater flexibility in staff, uh, cross-trained staff and staff that are able to do, uh, multiple functions and multiple, um, multiple, uh, areas of work. It has an emphasis on, uh, getting our inspectors to the point where they're able to inspect all the elements of a single-family home, uh, with one person as opposed to being limited to the trades, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and building. Uh, we think this is going to be a really good, um, good complement to, uh, our, our evolution of that, of that division and, um, will complement the, uh, implementation of the Acela permitting software. Our key sustainability and performance, uh, metrics, uh, we completed seven, uh, over a thousand site and subdivision, uh, reviews in FY nineteen with an average cost of a little over a hundred ninety-three dollars per review. Uh, we did expedited reviews to support, uh, the development of two-hundred-and-thirty-six units of affordable housing and nineteen economic development projects. We do coordinate with our internal partners and, um, do place priorities for these, for these type of projects that, that are much needed in our community. Under planning and zoning, we processed over fourteen hundred applications, uh, fiscal year nineteen with an average cost of twenty-six hundred per application. And as I mentioned, we are able to, uh, resolve issues leading to eighty percent, over eighty percent of land use, uh, rezoning applications being placed on the consent agenda. Finally, in the, in inspections, uh, of that three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand inspection number, uh, three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand of those inspections were building inspections that we did in FY nineteen, and our, uh, yearly average rollover rate was point zero-seven percent. And, uh, those inspections were done at a cost of a little over thirty-five dollars per inspection on average. Uh, finally, it's some, uh, feedback that we've, uh, that we've gotten from customers. Uh, we always like to, to receive that, uh, positive feedback, as, as does our staff, and, um, wanted to share, share some of that with the board. And that, uh, includes my scorecard presentation available for any questions.
Mr. Gormley, uh, Commissioner Merman, recognize.
Thank you. Just get Acela installed as quickly as possible, because I do hear from people, um, occasionally, not, oh, you know, all the time, but I think that they're really concerned that our process is so much different than the cities, and they'd like to see us on the same page.
Yes, and thank you for raising that. Um, as, as board members may recall, we did, uh, acquire the, the scripting from City of Tampa for the Acela, uh, automation implementation, and the goal of that was one to, to speed the implementation, but also to provide consistency between the two jurisdictions and the permitting process. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gormley, thank you.
Great job, Adam. Thank you. Frank?
Frank Strom, Director, Consumer and Veteran Services. I want to thank you for the opportunity today to present our department's scorecards. Under the leadership of our Assistant County Administrator Dexter Barge, Consumer and Veteran Services has become a multifunctional department that consists of the following, uh, services that I'm going to mention now. Our Veteran Services supports and manages all veteran activities within Hillsborough County and acts as a single point of contact for all of our outside government and private agencies. The demand for VA-related services will continue, continue to grow as our veterans return from operations throughout the world. Community advocacy is critical in ensuring our veterans are able to navigate the federal bureaucracy and able to receive the benefits that they have earned. And veterans who choose Hillsborough County as home bring valuable talents, assets, and a large economic engine to the community. Our Consumer Protection Division ensures the safety and welfare of our Hillsborough County residents by promoting fair and business practices, fair and honest business practices. Consumer Protection investigates potential frauds to verify if there is a violation of law and takes actions through referrals to law enforcement, administrative citations, and most frequently by mediating a resolution between the parties. Our services provide a low-cost alternative to the court system in helping our citizens recover their losses. Citizen Board Support, I'm sorry, uh, Citizen Board Support is a section under our Consumer Protection, and they provide administrative support to the Code Enforcement Board, five special magistrates, the Nuisance Abatement Board, or, and Land Use Appeals Board, as well as our hearing officers for the Vehicle For Hire and Trespass Towing ordinances. We process cases from other departments through to hearing and assist in the preparations of orders, liens, and releases. Our Vehicle For Hire unit concentrates their efforts by proactive enforcement at Tampa Bay International Airport, the Port of Tampa Bay, and surrounding areas within Hillsborough County, and operate under the Vehicle For Hire and Trespass Towing ordinances. Also within that team is our Regulatory Compliance Section, who oversees our pain management, locksmith businesses, and gas pumping assistance ordinances, to name a few. Our services are always free of charge to the citizens. What is our value to Hillsborough County? We contribute to a strong and sustainable economy and local economy. Hillsborough County has the largest veteran, veteran population in the state of Florida, and our veterans received five-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars annually in VA compensation and benefits. This data does not include the twelve thousand active-duty personnel at McDill Air Force Base, which reported an economic impact of three-hundred-and-eighteen billion dollars in two thousand seventeen. Our Consumer Protection Division returns seven-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand to our consumers, and we have a significant social impact on the community. Under our enhanced public and safety and regulatory, under, under enhanced public safety, our Regulatory Compliance Section enforces all B O C C ordinances such as main pain management, locksmith, sexually-oriented businesses, and gas pumping. Our Vehicle For Hire section coordinates with local enforcement, law enforcement to ensure safety, public safety, and safe transportation by regulating the towing and taxi industry. Life enrichment and recreational opportunities. Our Veterans Memorial Park was again named a regional destination by the Veterans Administration for the third year in a row, and we provided over a hundred educational outreach events to our community. Two thousand nineteen WalletHub.com ranked Hillsborough or the City of Tampa as the number one place for veterans to live throughout the top one hundred cities in the nation. This recent, this is a recent move from ninth place last year. Under self-sufficiency for individuals and families, we provide client, client assistance through successful claim resolution, increased quality of care for an aging population, and we safeguard our seniors' financials. When a VSO is able to qualify a senior veterans, a senior veteran or widow for pension, it often determines the difference between a higher quality of long-term care for those with limited assets. Another example would be when we're able to qualify an indigent veteran, a veteran for VA healthcare, it can reduce the demand for county healthcare programs. Under high-quality and county, uh, community assets, most of you have visited our new eight thousand, eight thousand square foot, I wish it was eight thousand dollars, excuse me, eight thousand square foot Veteran Resource Center, which houses our VSOs, administration staff, and our federal and state partners. We have completed all fourteen of our historic memorials, and our very own Veterans Memorial Committee is in the planning stage of an epic military learnings, or the design, planning stage of an epic military learning center. And lastly, this year we will begin the first phase of a new seating area that will hopefully alleviate some of the weather elements at our events, mainly the Sun Chaser. The next slide describes how again in two thousand eighteen, how Hillsborough County continued to be a leader in veteran population while our next top four counties, Duval, Pinellas, Broward, and Palm Beach, continue to decline. Although our growth was not as significant as last year, I believe this may be reflective of our aging World War II veterans and Korean vets, who many of may have passed respectfully. By comparison between two thousand fourteen and two thousand eighteen, of our other top four counties have seen a drop in veteran population as high as nine thousand. Over the same period, we have continued to be the largest population in the state of Florida for the last three years running, even though last year we had a drop of three thousand veterans. The message I'm hoping to articulate is that more veterans are calling Hillsborough County home, and I believe it's due to many factors, including our rich military community, job mar, and appealing job market, our Veterans Service Organizations, the VA Medical Center James Haley, which is the number one polytrauma center in the nation, and, and most importantly, a commi, a community that's committed to providing support to our veterans and their families with gratitude. Veterans' Economic Impact. This slide emphasizes my earlier point relating to the economic impact. Last year, Hillsborough County jumped from five-hundred-and-three to five-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars in veterans' compensation and pension benefits. These are dollars that are- As an illustration, Brevard County had the largest economic growth from, from FY eighteen to FY eighteen of forty-seven million dollars, whereas Pinellas County only experienced a one-million-dollar growth between the same time period. Hillsborough County has seen an increase of one hundred and seven million dollars from FY fourteen to FY eighteen. One of our main functions is helping our clients navigate complex systems. Under consumer, here are just a few examples of how our customers view our services. Under Consumer Protection, a citizen wrote, "We didn't have a clue how to handle this problem and get a resolution. The best decision we made was to contact Ms. Anderson. She got the problem solved and we couldn't be happier." One thousand six hundred dollars returned to the citizen. Ed Ortiz, my Veterans Service Officer Manager, received this letter from Ms. Dottie, saying, "Thank you so very much for guiding me through the process of getting D I C." D I C is dependency indemnity compensation, which is the benefit to our widows after their husband passed. "Without you, I wouldn't have even been aware of its existence, much less been able to navigate the complicated process. You're an asset to Veterans Services and I feel privileged to have met you. Sincerely, Ms. Dottie." How do we measure our value? Generally, all of our key performance indicators are measured through touch points, or more definitively, unit levels of service, which include interviews, both in-person and telephone, visitors, outreach contacts, written correspondence, and measured cases. Within our team, Veterans Services and Consumer Protection are the only two functions that do not generate revenue. Under Veterans Services, we assisted well over thirty-seven thousand client touch points last year, contributing to the five hundred and nineteen dollars a million in economic impact, and our cost for services was nineteen dollars and thirteen cents per client. Under Consumer Protection, we had twenty-six thousand touch points, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand economic recovery, with a cost of services of twenty-four dollars and forty cents. And under our Veterans Park, we had over eighty-nine thousand visitors, sponsored over one hundred events, at a cost of service of four dollars and three cents per contact. False alarm program also falls in the Consumer and Veteran Services. One of the main benefits of this program is it saves on Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office resources. It is estimated that ninety-seven percent of burger calls are false alarms, with an average time per call of twenty-five minutes and a cost of a hundred and forty dollars per call. This is a drain on Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office resources. Having a problem, having a program that encourages compliance increases law enforcement safety and reduces costs to taxpayers. Last year, our false alarm section generated twenty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one cases, generating one point one million dollars in revenue, with a return on investment of forty-one dollars and thirty-five cents per case. Our Citizen Board Support processed five thousand one hundred and nine cases, generated one point six million dollars in revenue, with a return on investment of two hundred and fifty-four dollars, point forty-four, per case. Citizen Board Support, it's fair to recognize that a majority of that revenue for Citizen Board Support was a result of code cases that were initiated by our Code Department, which was about sixty-nine percent. The rest was from other cases such as land use and water violations. Under our Vehicle For Hire unit, they touched three thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight client contacts. They generated almost three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in revenue and the unit cost of service was seventy-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. I'd like to note now that our Vehicle For Hire unit is now at its two-year mark of full implementation and transition from the old P T C. The unit operates on about a third of the staff compared to the prior agency. We will be bringing a report back to the board after the new year that will outline an assessment of the current services, costs, and recommendations for potential fee adjustments. What is our value to the community? As a whole, Consumer and Veteran Services achieved a ninety-seven percent overall customer satisfaction rating, surpassing our annual goal of ninety percent. We provided over a hundred and eighty-three thousand unit levels of service with a department return on investment of fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents per unit. I'd like to repeat that, a return on unit investment of fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents per unit level of service for our citizens. I would like to thank my managers and our tremendous team. I truly believe an organization's greatest asset is our human capital, and within our department, our V S Os have a combined military and V S O experience of a hundred and eighty-one years, while our Consumer Protection and Vehicle For Hire team has sixty-six years of law enforcement and seventy-four years of code investigation, code investigation experience, for a total of three hundred and twenty-one years in specialized experience. I'd also like to point that our entire department is thirty-six strong. I'd also like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for your continued support of our veterans and citizens, as well as Mr. Merrill for the opportunity to lead this great team. My team is with me here today and would be happy to take any questions you may have.
Strom, thank you very much. I don't see any questions, but I've got three hundred and thirty-four days left. I might come see you and see what kind of benefits I might be able to get. I'm a veteran and I never used it.
Take every dollar we can from the federal VA. That's our mission, sir.
Come see you. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Economic Development.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Lindsay Kimball, your Director of Economic Development, and very excited to have the opportunity today to present to you our overview presentation and give you a quick update on how we're doing. And just want to show you, I appreciate that I am the last scheduled item standing between you and Christmas break, so we added some flashing lights to our PowerPoint slide here to keep things interesting and festive. I know Mike said, "Put a, put a blinking light on your high-level numbers," so I did that, Mr. Merrill. So you can tell there in our first slide here, these are overarching for all efforts of the department, a hundred and sixty-one million in private capital investment through our efforts, which we estimate, estimated taxes to be generated from that investment, new investment of about two million dollars per year. So, you know, I strongly believe our value to this county is that we are generating revenue for you to do all of the things that you need to do, that you want to do, that are your priorities. So, in my mind, that's two million dollars now you have to spend on affordable housing or parks or transportation or whatever it is that's important to you. So, we take that very seriously. Also, the High Line numbers there, we impacted over forty thousand jobs and job seekers through our efforts, so we touched forty thousand people in Hillsborough County. And that twenty-two thousand number is the number of twenty, of total jobs added in our county. So, that's from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. We may or may not have touched those jobs, but just to give you a perspective on job growth in our communities, so the High Line number, and again, the forty thousand people that we impacted. So, our overview, we implement the Board's Economic Development Prosperity Strategies through the implementation of programs that result in productive, inclusive, and sustainable growth and improvement. So, by productive, we mean we're focusing on the business side, making sure that business can operate effectively as, as effectively as it can, has the best access to resources and human resources. Also inclusive, that every resident here has an opportunity to create wealth for themselves, to live a productive and healthy life that they choose to live, and sustainable, that we are being good stewards of the environment, but it's also financial resources as well. So, that's the sustainability piece. Our major work program areas, we are a small but mighty department. We handle many different areas. Just some of them are the lists there. I won't go through and read all of them, but we touch many different areas, but again, all tying back to how do we improve economic prosperity for all people in our community. Our value to Hillsborough County, so of course, we are strongly tied to the first one there, strong and sustainable local economy. As my, my colleague Craig Richards mentioned to you, we've had a great growth this year in targeted industry growth, so we focus on the targeted industry opportunities. Again, there's that hundred and sixty-one million dollar private capital investment number, ten competitive sites, projects are underway or completed, which are adding two-point-five million square feet of industrial and two hundred and seventy thousand square feet of office, which again, when those projects come online, they're going to generate new ad valorem revenue, which helps power the continued improvement of the life for residents in the county. And finally, Economic Development Innovation Initiative, this is our tech startup ecosystem that we strongly support. But a lot of these cross over, but those were the main ones in that category that I wanted to highlight. Obviously, everything we do, we try to, we tie back to the strong local economy. So, two, enhanced public safety. We believe that by removing the blight and reversing declining property values in the redevelopment areas through our redevelopment program which you adopted, it helps to deter crime and vandalism through the broken window theory, which is that a way a place looks impacts the way people behave in that place and the way that people feel about their community and how much pride you have in where you live. So, it's important to take care of those building facades and to reinvest in areas and to clean up graffiti and all of those things like that. So, it's enhancing public safety that way. Number three, life enrichment and recreational opportunities. A lot of what we do, obviously through the tourism development, working with Santiago and his team at Visit Tampa Bay, is helping to contribute to that. We also, this year, had our inaugural cycle of the Cultural Assets Program for the special event partnership grants with twenty-two approved projects, with matching money from the private side of four-point-seven million dollars to the county's investment of almost seven hundred thousand dollars. And of course, we do have a strong cultural-based support program through our department where we're supporting many cultural assets throughout the community. Number four, self-sufficient individuals and families. We have a strong program for workforce training and career pathways. Several years ago, the Board adopted the Manufacturing Alliance, which has really blossomed and has matured into a bedrock of our community. Craig Richards, again, spoke about the importance of manufacturing to our community, and it's been a lot owed to the support of this Board in funding the Manufacturing Alliance every year, adding to the, the training equipment and the training capacity of our partners at the school system and at Hillsborough County Community College, and helping to connect manufacturers to those training partners so that they can find meaningful employment for the students after they graduate. So, that's very important. Also, we've had nearly fifteen thousand touch points and over twenty-seven hundred one-on-one consulting hours with entrepreneurs and small businesses through the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center, which we're very proud of, and I know all of you have been able to visit there and we're thankful for that. It's a great, you know, really centerpiece for the entrepreneurial community. It's given a focal point for the community as well, so we're very grateful for all the support for the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center, or E C C, and our disadvantaged business inclusion program, our M B E S B E program. We're very proud of, especially the past two years, we've, the county spent more than sixty million dollars with M B E and S B E firms in the last fiscal year. That's the highest amount that we have on record, and we also attained an eighteen percent goal, which is fantastic, and I just want to give my appreciation to the other department directors who have really engaged with our M B E S B E team and made this a priority and supported minority and small businesses in county procurements. Finally, number five is high-quality community assets. Our Historic Preservation Program, you had three of those items on your agenda today on consent, is about maintaining the authentic character of the community. This year, we, we engaged in fifteen projects valued at eleven-point-three million dollars in private investment, and also revitalizing industrial and commercial properties through private investment matching grant programs. That's our redevelopment program, and we worked with eight-point-five million dollars in new projects. So, our success stories, two that I am very proud of, let's start with the Jet View Logistics Center redevelopment there. So, this is in the North Airport area, and I'm a Tampa native, Hillsborough County native, so I, I feel like I've driven by this and it's been vacant for more than ten years, but I feel like it's been vacant for probably thirty-five years. It's the, it was that, that old decrepit center that was north of Hillsborough Avenue, right at the end of the runway, when you drive down Hillsborough, drive west on Hillsborough Avenue. I just assumed it was bought by the airport in part of their crash zone, safety zone, but it was not. It actually was just waiting for its moment to be reborn into the Jet View Logistics Center, which we were happy to assist with. Through, the county invested through our redevelopment program about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and that leveraged an eight-point-six million dollar investment by the new property owner. The punchline here is that the assessed value increased in one year after that investment, after the redevelopment, from three-point-seven million to thirteen-point-four million. So, that increased annually their ad valorem revenue, our ad valorem revenue, by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. So, that's the ongoing legacy of the importance of redevelopment, in my opinion, is you're creating these continual streams of income for the county, so you continue to do the good work that you want to do. It's now home to six companies with nearly a hundred jobs there, and of course, it removed a very blighted condition along a major roadway. The second there, and I'm also really proud of, is Ms. Maria Leon of Onyx Cleaning. And in that picture there, you'll see Maria, her team, and Jeanette Blanco, who is an award-winning consultant that we have on our county team, who I'm also very proud of. She was named two consecutive years as Small Business Consultant of the Year for our region, so she is a dynamo. And so, at our E C C, through our contract with the Small Business Development Center, we provide no cost, so nothing that the county offers, we don't charge for this business consulting, and it's an amazing opportunity for any small business owner to take advantage of. Maria came in with an idea. She had a drive and a strong work ethic, an idea and a dream, and she worked with Jeanette, and now, in three years, she's grown to nearly six million dollars in contracts. She's created thirty full-time jobs and ten part-time jobs with a ninety percent retention rate. She's obtained through our help with loan packaging and connections to S B A Financing, a twenty-four thousand dollar business loan to help herself, her company, grow. And of course, she's a certified M B E and S B E with Hillsborough County. So, these are just two small examples of the many areas that we touched that I wanted to highlight for you in this fiscal year wrap-up. And finally, my last slide, key sustainability and performance metrics. Again, I've mentioned about the amount of consulting that we've provided, our targeted industries, the amount of capital investment and jobs, we're phenomenal, we're very proud of that. Tourism development, let me underline, I know Santiago comes and visits with you often, but we had a record-breaking T D T collections. This Board also made it possible for us to now have a sixth cent on our T D T collections because we're an area of high tourism impact, and now this county also has that resource to utilize as well, and again, record-breaking T D T collections. I just want to say that, you know, through all of this work, we couldn't, I couldn't have done anything without the wonderful team that we have, our wonderful leadership, Mr. Merrill, Ms. Wise, Mr. Barton, who are in my leadership team, as well as the amazing staff that I have, I just want to tell them thank you. And I know I said we're a small and mighty department, but I think we're one of the smallest departments. We have twenty-seven staff. We haven't added any positions in the seven years that I've been here, so we're proud of that. We've just thoughtfully repurposed and been very prudent with our resources, but we're also, just wanted to mention and let everyone know how proud I am of the awards that we've won this year. Of course, the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center won the two thousand and nineteen National Association of Counties Award. The F R A won, the Florida Redevelopment Association gave us also a statewide award for the Historic Preservation Program. Our small business team won several awards. I won't enumerate all of them, but we were very well-recognized at the state-level awards. Also, we want to thank the Planning Commission, who gave us awards for the Entrepreneur Collaborative Center and our redevelopment program for receiving the award of merit for, in the last fiscal year. So, I'm very proud, I just wanted to brag on my folks, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Ms. Kimball, I don't see any questions. I want to thank you all for all that you do and all that you love this county. That really shows, and we will appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your support. Thanks.
Great job, Lindsay. Adam, Frank. We do amazing things all year, all year long, and I appreciate the Board's support and willingness to hear these scorecards. I think the thing that doesn't often come up, we know we provide great service, it's the value piece. When you look at the cost per unit of service, sometimes we talk about billions of dollars, but we're really providing good return on investment and trying to control costs. So, thanks again, everybody. And that concludes everything except for any future issues.
Future issues? Mr. Smith, you recognize?
Thank you.
Turn your mic on. really shows, and we will appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your support. Thanks.
Great job, Lindsay. Adam, Frank. We do amazing things all year long, and I appreciate the Board's support and willingness to hear these scorecards. I think the thing that doesn't often come up, we know we provide great service, it's the value piece. When you look at the cost per unit of service, sometimes we talk about billions of dollars, but we're really providing good return on investment and trying to control costs. So, thanks again, everybody. And that concludes everything except for any future issues.
Future issues? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you.
Turn your mic on.
And, yeah, this, here we are. So I saw an article in the paper this week about a court case shaping up to fight state preemption, another case of state preemption, and this case, it's of local human rights ordinances. And so dozens of counties and cities across the state are joining together in an amicus brief to defend their local ordinances against the state preemption and defend home rule in this area. And so I've been discussing this with the county attorney, and I'd like to ask Ms. Beck to look into this further and help us understand how we can best defend our county's human rights ordinances from this state overreach and preserve home rule in this area. And I might ask her right now if she's got anything she wants to explain about this.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I think I brought this up in most of my briefings this week. We just recently received this request to join in to the amicus brief, and so my intention is to bring back an agenda item at your January 8th Board meeting in order to provide that client authorization from this Board to allow us to participate in the amicus and defend our ordinances.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any other future items? Any other future items? Ain't none we're joining.